Wednesday, December 9th, 2020. And so with that, the first item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. So I ask that you will stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you for that. Now, the next item on our agenda is the 2020 Board Reorganization. So the action to be taken is that the board will reorganize and we will have the election of the board presidents. This is in accordance with state law and consistent with our board policy, OGP 12. And so our board must elect a board president annually or upon the seating of new board members. Upon adoption of policy governance, the board eliminated the position of vice president, for your information. So with that, I now get to hand the gavel over to our superintendent.
It's like two minutes a year. Now, President Muraldo, I actually do literally physically have it. Can we see it? Oh, I've got this weird backdrop. I've got to keep it in front of me. I have a lovely gavel here. It is inscripted with your name and the term of your presidency. And is this your third presidency?
Second.
Muraldo?
Second.
Second presidency? Okay. So now you have a matching pair for your study at home. And so congratulations. And I just want to thank you, Marnie, for your service this past year. We were joking, Marnie and I, the other day because last time, I think we made or made the move to close a school while you were president.
Yes, we did.
This year, we decided to have a worldwide pandemic. So you've presided over a lot of public input during your two presidencies. So thank you for, the audience may not be aware, but the president is the spokesperson for the board and also is the person that plans the agenda for these meetings with the immediate past president. And that's been President Muraldo. And the immediate past president was Director Gallinger, who I know is at work tonight. And because we're having our meeting on Wednesday in recognition of the Jewish holiday, he was not able to join us. But again, just wanted to thank you, Marnie, for your leadership. And you did a wonderful job. And as soon as I see you in person, I will get you your commemorative gavel so that you can continue to run the meetings with this efficiency in your home as well with Tony and your children.
Boy, if only they honored me as much as my colleagues did.
Better raise their hands before speaking.
They don't.
Now, I do have a-
There's plenty of eye rolling.
Oh, you get that in your house too, huh? So yeah, I've been, what I hear is, you're not my superintendent. That's what I hear in my home. So I do have some official business, though, that I need to do here now that I have virtually passed the commemorative gavel to President Muraldo. At this time, I do need to ask for nominations for board president. And I do have to do this three times. So I just want to be clear that I am now asking for nominations for board president for this term, beginning tonight. I believe that's the second time. So again, are there any nominations? And I see Director Moore's hand is up.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Suzanne Weaver.
Okay, Director Weaver has been nominated. Are there any other nominations for board president? And I'm not hearing any. We do need a second on that nomination.
I'll second.
Okay, so Director Mullings has seconded the nomination of Director Weaver as president. I should have noted at the start, this is a roll call vote. So I will be asking, I'll be calling your names and asking for your vote. And so again, we are now voting for the coming years' president. Director Weaver has been nominated and seconded. So I will start with you, Director Moore. How do you vote?
For Director Weaver.
Director Muraldo?
For Director Weaver.
Director Mullings?
For Director Weaver.
And Director Weaver?
It's tempting to go with someone else. Director Weaver.
Won't matter. So, I'm sorry, I apologize, Director Weaver.
Oh, I did, Director Weaver.
Okay, so it is unanimous. Thank you for that. We, congratulations, Director Weaver. I guess it's congratulations. And I know that this is, again, I believe you're, is this your third? This will be your third presidency?
This is my, yeah, I have two of those gavels over here.
Okay, so now, since you already have some of those gavels at your house, let's just pretend I am sliding the gavel over your way. And I will be turning the meeting over now to Director and now President Weaver.
Okay, do we not elect lead rep at this time?
We do.
Oh, do I do that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, actually, according to my notes, I hand it over to you and then you run the election for the legislative rep.
Oh, awesome, because I'm totally unprepared to do that.
I have some notes here and I would be more than happy to help my new president get through that. It does say that the election of the legislative rep is in even years. And of course, this is an even year. Marnie was elected lead rep in 2018. She was elected board president in 2019. So Director Gallinger then was elected lead rep to complete her term, which actually ends tonight. So at this time, the new board president would ask for nominations for board legislative rep. And then afterward, if everyone agrees that nominations then would be closed and then there would be a roll call vote as well for the nominee to be elected to serve as board legislative rep.
Okay, and I can do that. Do I have to do that one three times as well?
Yeah, I would assume. It doesn't say that in my notes, but for safety, I would just go ahead and do it three times.
And Marnie was nodding. So, okay, do I have any nominations for the position of legislative representative? And?
I nominate Harlan Gallinger.
Okay, and I'm not sure that I need a second, but let's just take one anyway.
I think if you say his name, then it does need to be seconded.
Okay, Director Gallinger. Do I have any other nominations for legislative rep? And one last time, do I have any other nominations for legislative representative? Okay, that's three. So, oh.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we know if he's going to accept the nomination?
That's a great question.
He loses out.
Nobody asked me.
He can resign at the next meeting.
That's true.
He could. This is the downside of not showing up for meetings. You get elected to stop.
It's always my rule.
Yeah, I do not know one way or the other. I have not spoken to him about it. And apparently, no one else has either. Let's just go ahead and elect him and see what happens. Okay, so. So a roll call vote. Let's see, if we're alphabetical, Director Muraldo.
I vote for Dr. Harlan Gallinger.
Director Moore.
Director Gallinger.
Director Mullings.
We have a lot of Ms. Director Gallinger.
And I will also vote for Dr. Gallinger. So we have a unanimous election for Dr. Gallinger to be our legislative rep.
Somebody might want to let him know. Well, we'll text him or we'll make sure. And truly, if there was a problem with that, we could, there's no rule that says we can't redo this at the next meeting. Lastly, Director Weaver, this is also the time when we identify our FRN representative. And I believe Director Muraldo is the board's current FRN representative. And I don't know, I don't think there's a formal voter process you have to go through for this. It's just a matter of a conversation and then you all deciding who you want to be your FRN representative.
Right, so I would ask, Marnie, does she want to continue in that capacity?
Oh, doesn't anyone else want to get sucked into NSBA stuff?
You do it so well.
Okay. I get to do NSBA stuff for like 22 hours this week, so sure.
Okay, and is that, do I have a consensus of the board? Do I see nodding heads? I don't think we need a formal vote?
This doesn't mean you can't join me in Washington DC if we ever go back there.
Well, and there was a time when we had two or three people back in DC because I think we had two FRN people and then somebody was on the WASD board. But, so yeah, that's totally doable.
So it looks like Director Muraldo will be staying your FRN. And I should say to the public, that is the Federal Relations Network. That is our school board directors, kind of affiliated with the National School Board Association. And kind of, I would consider it, Marnie, you correct me if I'm wrong, kind of the federal lobbying arm of NSBA.
Federal advocacy as a 501(c)(3), they can't lobby.
Good. See, I knew you would correct me on that. Yes, thank you. Advocacy, the advocacy arm of the School Directors Association.
You're just so good at this. You're perfect.
This is the advantage of having an experienced board. You've got people who know how to get things done.
That's right.
Okay, so thank you, Superintendent, for holding my hand through that. And thank you, Marnie, for continuing your service as FRN representative and of course, for your past service as president. I have some impressive shoes to fill. This was not an easy term for you and thank you for guiding us as well as you did. Okay, so let's see if I remember how to run a meeting. The next thing on our agenda is student input. And since I was the board rep attached to Skyline, I had the privilege of meeting with the Skyline students. I think it was last week. And so at this meeting, and ooh, it just popped up on my screen, I have Caroline Abeta and Joseph Seo. I hope I got your names right. And they are each going to give us some input about what's going on at Skyline and in their student lives. So if you can just, one at a time, introduce yourselves and tell us what year you are and what you'd like us to know.
Hi, my name is Caroline Abeta. I'm currently a senior here at Skyline High School and I'm an exec board member of our Leadership Program, ASV. I would like to answer a question, if that is okay with Ms. Weaver. What is one recent classroom lesson that I had, that I was totally engaged with? And I was so inspired to dig deeper. My favorite class is my psychology class. From the beginning of the year, I have always loved this class, specifically in a program we do called Topic Selection to Discussion Analysis. This activity mainly focuses on researching a common psychology topic such as addiction or ADHD. And we're using this evidence to gather, that we gather to form an analysis in correlation to the title Nature vs. Nurture and presenting this to our class in a group format. I personally find myself so interested in researching these new topics as well as developing a future sense on how to present an idea to a group of strangers, kind of like this. Not all can agree, but I personally love to learn and expand my knowledge to a broad sets of topics and connecting this to my psychology class. I take extra time outside to learn more. However, this is not only just me, but other peers participating in the same group. We have, I guess we love to have this free opinion that not all classes have. And we love the ability to share and compare others' thoughts and what we've gathered. And that's very much worth noting because the discussion portion can make this lack of socializing that we have in a virtual environment so much better. One of my main takeaways for me especially is passion and how it is so important to my attention span and the effort I put into my classes. Realizing this for me has made me understand the importance of finding a career, which future me will still be just as excited about later. I can vouch for a majority of the seniors this year that is so stressful to decide what I'm going to be doing 10 years from now. But I am learning this. At the end of the day, I will focus on the passions of now and know there's nothing stopping you from doing the passions of the future later. But however, the future is important to set goals and make sure the consequences do not outweigh your success. But if I want to learn a little more about why men are diagnosed with ADHD than women, I would like the freedom of mind and gaining confidence in these decisions. However, it does disappoint me how many of us do not reach our full potential due to a lack of passion or, in quite a lot of cases, knowledge. I personally would love to see small group counseling, mandatory or not, as one way for students to get more comfortable around making these future decisions and ultimately to gain confidence in making good and rewarding decisions, whether that is now or for the future. There are many classes provided for parents, but I personally lack and I don't see any universally targeted programs for students with learning how to get motivated, to promote confidence, good decisions, and help when needed. I feel more researches for students to reach out besides the College and Career Center and simple counseling can seem really daunting. So this kind of option for small group counseling would make it feel more personal and the fear can be eliminated as we learn more. But I am glad for the programs that are offered, especially my psychology class and would love to see more peers as passionate as I feel. So thank you for listening and that is all.
Thank you very much. And Joseph?
Hello, everyone. My name's Joe Isso. I'm in 12th grade, so this is my senior year. And today, I want to talk about the challenges and also the rewarding things of online school. I first want to say the transition has been phenomenal from second semester junior year to now my first semester senior year. I think the use of Canvas is extremely, is going extremely well. Like, my teachers have adapted super well. And I like the transition we had from previously just having it being completely independent versus some sort of supporting system for the students. I think that's been amazing. In addition, something that's been super rewarding, especially for me who's getting ready to head off to college, is the independency. I'm kind of learning from online school. Previously, like throughout my high school life, middle school, et cetera, I'd always have like an adult or a teacher or parent, you know, telling me to do my work. But as both parents are gone working, I'm here at my desk trying to get all my work done. And my bed, my bed's actually right behind me, so it's easy for me to like do homework and take a nap. But online school has made me kind of transition from, you know, being very dependent on other people versus me using my time wisely, me managing my life and becoming independent. So there's that aspect of maturing that I've seen through online school. However, there are a bit of challenges with, that comes with online school that I'd like to talk about. I think the first, or the biggest thing I would like to say is that sometimes it can get very de-motivating for us students. It gets a little mentally tough in places. And I think a lot of that comes from a long period of time looking at a screen, which can be difficult. Like a study by a neurologist, Brandon Peters, it stated that the longer you stare at a light source or some sort of technology, it will affect your sleep and like what time your brain wires yourself to sleep and can often cause insomnia in students. And I think that's been showing between like me and my peers as well, the effects of being on screens for a long period of time. So a part of that struggle has been, you know, it's been 15 weeks of online school. And sometimes it feels like we're going to class to look at pixels and our mind starts to wander. As much as we'd love to try and learn, the hours in which we stare at a screen kind of affect how we perform. So I would say one of the more challenging aspects has been, you know, staring at a screen. And I think it would be extremely helpful for us if there were more times of us closing our eyes and really looking at pen and paper, just as we used to. Another, another aspect that has been challenging for us is the priorities in which we go about our day and school. I know personally for me, sometimes my priority is to go to class because it has mandatory attendance, rather than me actually trying to get my work done, which kind of conflicts how much I'm able to put in a day. I think an important aspect that a lot of students are kind of skipping out on are kind of taking rest days sometimes and letting their minds cool down from looking at a screen. So that has been one of our challenges. Another challenge that I asked around my peers was their issues with SEL, which is Social Emotional Learning. While students, there are some students that enjoy it. It has been hard for some students to wake up Wednesday mornings and use that time for 30 minutes of SEL because a lot of the people I've talked to don't really understand the full purpose of it or don't really benefit out of it and would prefer to use that time elsewhere in resting, whether that be like a morning hike, morning breakfast or baking or just sleeping in a little bit more. The concern was more if they could use that time to rest up and catch up on their work more, rather than logging into a mandatory attendance class. But aside from a couple of things that, you know, slow down our motivation, everything else has been going amazing. I see myself turning in more work than I did actually when we were in school. So that has been really wonderful for me and my peers. Thank you.
Well, thank you. That was really thoughtful input from both of you and we appreciate it. It's really important for the board to get student perspective directly from the students. I encourage you to stick around for the meeting as long as you can. We have a few things coming up on the agenda, such as the ISD live survey results that you might find really interesting. So please feel free to stay, listen. If you have a question or a comment, you know, raise your hand on screen and we'll get to you as soon as we can. So thank you very much.
I wanted to say thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak to you all.
Oh, you're very welcome. We enjoy it. We like to hear from students. Next on the agenda is public input and this is input for items not on the regular agenda. So if you wanted to talk about NS2 or the ISD live survey, that would be input that you would give later. This would be for other sorts of input. And, hang on, I've got to find my cursor. We will, because we do have a full agenda, I'm going to keep it to a half an hour, two minutes apiece, so that's roughly 14, 15 people. Please state your name, your attendance area. Please keep your input civil. Let's see, what else do we have? Oh, and just as an FYI, it can sometimes look like the board is not paying attention or we're looking away somewhere else. Many of us take notes, so just know, we do appreciate all the input we get as well as all of the email we get, which is the other way to connect with the board. There has been quite a lot of it. So you may find your email acknowledged rather than replied to in copious detail, but please know that we are reading and listening to every single email. And we do actually appreciate all the input that we're getting and all the different perspectives that we're getting from individual family stories. It's really been very helpful. So with that, okay, I've got three hands. And I'm not quite as Zoom savvy as Marnie, but we'll try to make this work. The first one I see is Mark Gorski. So if you can turn on your video and unmute your microphone and it's possible that I have to help with that, but.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, I don't see you.
Oh.
Hear you. Now I see.
There you go.
Thank you.
Great. Again, my name is Mark Gorski. I have a junior in Iskwa High School school system. So that's all good. I just want to provide some quick input with a question. It's one I spoke a month ago at the Iskwa School Board. So I did want to start off by thanking the school board and the school district for opening up the sport fields. We now do have teams up and playing, so that's all outstanding. The boys are off and running, getting more physical, mental, and social activity, all within the COVID guidelines and protocols. So that's all goodness. So now my question is, to push a little further, is now that the boys are out there for a minimum of two or a maximum of two practices or events a week, I know that there's not that many teams that are using the fields and they're probably only utilized 10 to 20%. What is the next step that the teams that are looking to use the fields can actually start using them more than two times a week? Because the teams, even though you're using the sports fields, the school district sports field, we are still using the city sports fields and having to pay our hard-earned booster dollars to rent those fields. And our fields are, or the school fields are still sitting idle. So I would like the board and the school district to think about when can we actually start getting more access to those fields? It does appear that we have processes that are up and running, so we should be safe to move forward. That's what I have. Appreciate any support and direction we can get. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And I should have mentioned at the beginning, this is public input, so the board will not respond directly to your input. But I saw the superintendent taking notes, so I'm sure your question's been noted and we'll come up with an answer at some point. The next on my list is Henry Schreiber. Ah, perfect.
Hi, my name is Henry Schreiber. I'm a sophomore at Skyline High School. I enjoy TV production, theater in my block classes. I've lived in this school district all my life, from Sunny Hills to Pine Lake to now Skyline High School. But if I'm going to be honest, as much as I want to be optimistic sometimes, I'm not sure that online learning is an effective replacement. I have no supplements for my social life. My days seem to be a lot longer and there's no way to connect with my teachers. I and many others have lost motivation in our classes because we are sitting in front of a screen all day. It might be different for other grades like the seniors because they're going to college. But for many people, middle schoolers and high schoolers, they just have everyday blends into the next one. And many students have been cheating on tests and assignments because Google is a click away. A lot of people are showing up to school not really for the intention of learning. A lot of them just want to get by and get a good grade. It's also hard when I, to think that a lot of our buildings are locked down 24/7 in the way that I think we can be more creative with our solutions when it comes to hybrid learning. It's hard to watch when the cousins and people in other states are going to school. And I think that students should be given the choice to return to school under safe measures. And teachers are trying their best. I really respect them and know that they have my back. But adults aren't able to empathize with the struggle our generation is facing. Can you imagine if you had so much promise taken away from you in such an essential time in life? Culturally, high school is everything in the movies, in media, homecoming, football games. I was cast as Cogsworth in Beauty and the Beast and I have no idea if I'll be able to do another musical for another year. Students don't really have a voice in this matter and I just encourage the school board to think about the psychological damage that could be irreversible compared to the virus. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Henry. We do really appreciate it when we hear from students. So thank you for taking the time. Next up is Nate Perea.
Thank you, Suzanne. My name is Nate. I have three children in the district, elementary, middle, and high school. I wanted to take this opportunity to invite all of the board members, the district staff, the members of the teachers' union, Superintendent Thiele. Next week on Wednesday evening, we're going to be hosting a live forum with the superintendent from the Mead School District in Spokane, who's going to be sharing with us and a lot of other individuals from around the state about how they've successfully been open for in-person learning since the beginning of the year and talk about all of the measures they've taken, the successes they've seen and the status of how they're tracking the very, very, very few cases of COVID they've had in in-person learning. That's an open invitation. It will be available for anyone to join. And again, Wednesday evening next week, we will send via email to all of you the details for that event. We think it'll be a great learning opportunity to see from a district in our own state who's been open since the beginning of the school year successfully for in-person learning. I also wanted to make a comment on the, I saw a copy of the school district's dashboard for case tracking and reporting. I want to commend you for getting that out. I believe the version I've seen is the official. I would like to make a recommendation, though, that there be added data points to that for showing how many cases were contracted in school by being- by being in person. Um, the total number of cases doesn't tell the story if we have staff or students that contracted it outside of school and uh perhaps never even set foot in a building if they knew that they had contracted it and um quarantined before coming back. So please add more metrics and details to that dashboard if that is truly going to be the uh public facing one where teachers can go and anybody in the community can go to see where the where the cases have been. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And uh please do send us the information on the thing next Wednesday. That sounds interesting. Um, next up, oh, people keep raising their hands. Next up is Carrie Kiefer.
Hi, uh, my name's Carrie Kiefer. I have two uh high schoolers at Issaquah High School, and I wasn't going to speak tonight because I made my point um last Friday, but I did want to bring up something that sort of escalated um since then, there's a lot of conversation. I mean, apparently we're not going back into the schools in the next day. So um I would like to mention that I think something needs to be done ASAP about the grading scales. Um, again, I can only speak to the high schools, but I know these kids are working hard and it just the grading scale doesn't compute to the way that they're learning. And so I think some mitigation needs to be made and I think that um, you know, there's been a lot of talk about pass fail. I know Bellevue is discussing that and I want to say I I said this way back in the spring. I don't know if you remember, but I don't think that that's an option. I think that if we want to keep these kids engaged, giving them a pass fail is a worst situation they could have because they're going to do the bare minimum to get by. So um I just wanted to say that it might be time to consider changing the grading scale a little bit so that an A would be maybe down to an eighty-seven or an eighty-five um and a B would go down from there. Um, I just think that these kids need to have something changed in order to acknowledge the fact that the way they're learning is special and different and their grades do still matter. So something to consider. Um, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, next up Marina Subaya.
Hi, Marina Subaya, Maple Hills Elementary, and I just wanted to say um slightly different topic, if we're starting to think of a post vaccine world, which is amazingly coming up really fast. Um, wanted to just throw it out there to the district and all the relevant staff that as in our and myself, I would happily volunteer to administer vaccines wherever, whenever, to whomever. For how long it took, I would recruit lots of friends to help with the effort if it was needed. And um just also want to ask the district employees as many as possible to be reaching out to the the departments of health now um and OSPI asking for guidance on what does a post-vaccine school world look like? At what point can we change the recommendations for distancing and things like that because it's shockingly coming up really quickly, especially potentially for high school um and the senior class. And just wanted to second what I heard someone else say about the dashboard. You know, thank you so much for getting a dashboard up. And yes, the one piece of really critical information that I think the community really wants to know is if um the number of cases contracted at school that are epidemiologically linked, but particularly are these cases at school where people in buildings and that just gives us the whole picture that the community wants to know and informs us appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next is Jaclyn. I don't have a last name. Jaclyn, are you there?
Yes, hello.
There you are.
Hi, uh, my name is Jaclyn Maulstead. I am parent of a ninth grader at IHS and a seventh grader at Pacific Cascade Middle School. Um, I'm talking tonight mostly because I am just really frustrated. I feel like the online learning um has just really kind of failed our family. My kids are are generally good students. They're normal learners. Um, we have every um advantage to us in this situation. We have adequate computers, internet, um housing, and my kids are still struggling. And I I just see it in their their moods are down, they're unmotivated at school, their grades are falling. Um, and I'm it's it's really, really wearing on us. So um, and like the the boy said from the other high school is that my kids just don't have other social opportunities. So them not being in school is a real uh just a detraction from their ability to continue to progress. So um, a couple of things I just wanted to say is that um my husband and I both work, so we are not home to help our children during the days. So the survey that you all sent out as to how much time can you lend help to your student, I thought was a rather ridiculous question. Um, we're not living in the nineteen fifty's. Most of us are dual working households and we are not sitting next to our students all day helping them. Um, so whatever is that you are providing the students should be something that they can do without parental help. Uh, the second thing I'd like to say too is that I'm an Overlake employee. Um, I'm a nurse practitioner in this community. We have been working in our facilities without social distancing, wearing masks and have had almost no spread um in that situation. So I don't believe the school situation is unique in that way. I believe that we can go back to school with masks, appropriate sanitation safely. The data shows that we can, and I am just imploring you all to continue to work to get these kids back in school as soon as possible and not waiting until the numbers look good and then say, okay, maybe we'll work on a plan to get them back. That's like playing the stock market and buying when things are high. Um, we need to know exactly when we're we can the plan is ready so then we can deploy the plan as soon as the numbers fall. Um, so that's about all I had to say. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Um, next is Janet Kelly.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. My name's Janet Kelly and I'm the parent of a first grader at Sunny Hills. I actually didn't think I'd be speaking tonight and hadn't planned any prepared remarks, but I got a call this morning from a colleague who told me that um one of our other colleagues is at Seattle Children's dealing with an eighth grader who is on suicide watch. Um, so I just really am here on her behalf tonight um and would encourage the district to be swift and take action to get the district and the schools open. The kids are really suffering and I think that it's not being factored into everything that um is being considered right now. So please, please um include more metrics in your data. Um I know this is a public health crisis and there's a lot of different factors that are being evaluated, but um just really ask you to consider the mental health aspects and the social and emotional health health aspects of the pandemic on the children right now.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Um, Whitney Gardner.
Good evening. I also hadn't planned on speaking and coming after Ms. Kelly is a little overwhelming because my concerns are also very much about the mental health. Um, I have five children and I've been parenting for over twenty years. Three of my children are currently uh in the Isqwa School District with the Isqwa High School being our feeder school. As you can see, I'm still at my office. I left my house at seven AM this morning, which means all my children are home by themselves, uh having to educate themselves during the day. My uh four neurotypical students and one child with Down syndrome who just recently turned fourteen years old and I was begging you in September when the metrics were appropriate to get my kids back in school. And your MOU that you just signed last week would have had all of my children in school in September. Your MOU came and I listened to it at the end of Friday afternoon after I had probably engaged in my son's Diego sixth or seventh IEP since he left school in March of two thousand and twenty. So six or seven meetings. It was tragic to me to hear in that meeting that his regression from being able to speak three to four word sentences through the summer was one word statements. If you're concerned about your children who can articulate their emotions and how concerned they are, put yourself in my shoes when I was told that my child was speaking in one word sentences. It has taken them over nine months to get to where he was in March of two thousand and twenty. And at this point, he will have left school in March of two thousand and nineteen and based upon your MOU, it doesn't look like my son will be back in school potentially until September of two thousand and twenty, at which time he would be a freshman at Isqwa Middle School. I did a quick a quick or Isqwa High School. I did a quick data check and it indicates to me that there are approximately twenty-five hundred students at Isqwa High School. So you're asking my child who has special needs, who speaks maybe in three word sentences to go from middle school to twenty-five hundred students. My child is very lucky in that he has been received quite well among the neurotypical community, but he has not had in-person services with that neurotypical community since March of two thousand and twenty. So I'm here to advocate for your middle school kids, for your kids who are looking at leaving seventh grade and then all of a sudden showing up and having to go to high school with twenty-five hundred students. For your middle schoolers, you aren't getting any extracurricular activities like sports that you opened up to your high schooler. My high school son gets two thirty minute football sessions this week and he's giddy. He's excited. He was turning in things on time just because he knew his coach was going to check in on him. If you.
That's that's three minutes. I'm sorry, can you wrap?
Yeah, if you think your MOU gets parents who have middle schoolers and high schoolers excited, you're just wrong. It's very discouraging. And all day Friday afternoon, we were discouraged because we don't think our kids are going back anytime soon.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for your input. We appreciate it. Um, Jennifer Spall.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Spall and I have a fourth grader at Newcastle Elementary. Um, I was it's a step forward on the MOU, but I I have to echo some of the previous comments. I want to see some more data points. And I also want to give some hope to kids who are not K through three. And it seems that the emphasis is getting uh very, very young children back in the buildings and not the other kids. My son is in the age group where he's ten years old. He can't be left home alone. Uh, he needs his peers. He needs social interaction. He used to be a great little kid with a great attitude, loved school. And now he slips me notes and says he he wants to quit. He wants to quit everything. He's spending so much time in front of screens. I had to take him to an optometrist for the headaches and he now wears glasses because he's in front of a screen all the time. I just would like to see some movement towards other kids. Not just first, second, third graders and and kindergartners, but you still have this gap of students that can't be left alone at home that are socially isolated. And it's it's not just my kid. It's all the little kids that run around in our neighborhood. They're all down. They are all dejected. They are demoralized. So thanks for taking some steps in the the right direction, but need more.
Thank you very much. Um, next is Brooke Sullivan.
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can see you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Um, thanks for taking comments tonight and I do appreciate, again, I'll echo the step forward with an MOU. Um, a couple of meetings ago, I was pretty passionate about you know, making sure that the adults were getting in the room together and coming up with an agreement. So I do appreciate that step forward. I I know I've heard a lot about the metrics that are being used, of the pros and cons of those. All what I wanted to bring up tonight was um and I appreciate the dashboard as well and making sure we continually look to what important metrics we can share on that. Um, echoing what Nate said, you know, how can we track cases that exist that did not get contracted through the schools because we do know there will be positives as we have seen with any openings. And my other comment, question, um suggestion, uh, I've noticed with the Lake Shalane School District, they have done a lot of steps and I don't know how, but to do testing, community testing onsite at their schools. And I think that's really important if we are going to use a metric like positivity rate to show um that as a district, we are working towards getting a lot of people tested because my one concern about a positivity rate, which I'm sure you all know, is the denominator really matters. And you know, we need to make sure that we are testing, you know, a lot of people to make sure that the um that the sample size and and the population is appropriately reflected in that. So I'm not sure. I see there they have the National Guard doing it. I'd be happy to help research that as well, but I think that would be something worth us um looking into as a district to help our community as well with testing. So that's all I really wanted to say. I do thank you. I do, you know, I want us to keep moving forward with getting the other kids. I didn't say, I'm sorry, I had two kids at IVE, two preschoolers. Um, we are in the IVE district. You know, I do want to keep us moving forward. I've heard these stories of the high school kids. My fifth grader, obviously, I want him back in the classroom. So you know, as much as we can keep pushing forward, great, but if whatever we can do for our whole community to to get tested and know um would be great as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next up Kimberly Brown.
Hi, thank you. I have kids at Apollo and Isaquah Valley and wanted to bring up two quick points. Um, I do appreciate the MOU, but I want to make sure that everyone is super clear that we are on day eighteen of the metric being used to decide whether our kids go back to school, not being published by King County or the state. Um, and because of that, I'm actually calling on the board to pass some sort of resolution to override that MOU and compel our teachers back January fourth. I pulled out the calendar and my second and third graders in a best case scenario, if those numbers get published over winter break and notification is made on the first day back at school, the first workday, the first day my kids will be in school is February fourth. And that's a best case scenario. And that's just not acceptable. I want to tell you a little bit of a story. My kids are incredibly privileged. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I spend from nine fifteen to three forty every single day supporting two students remote learning. They both have their own devices. We have reliable internet and we do everything we can to make sure those kids are learning. We also have incredible, incredible teachers, and I am not dismissing what our teachers are doing at all. But what I will tell you is one of my kids came home with meets standards across her entire report card in trimester one. And my question to her teacher was how on earth is that possible based on what I'm seeing in her writing and in her math? And her teacher's response to me was it's impossible for me to tell when I can't walk around the classroom and look over her shoulder or confer with her one-on-one in a classroom setting. She cannot accurately assess my kid. So my kid looks great on paper, but she's not doing well and she has every opportunity given to her. And she has the support of a parent who's literally sitting next to her, sometimes in my bedroom closet doing Zern. Uh, my friends on Facebook can attest to that. I have made comments that I am doing Zern in a bedroom closet with her because she is completely overwhelmed and doesn't know what she's doing. And her teacher, again, is doing everything she can. But the data would show she's meeting all the standards and she's quite frankly not. So we need to get these kids back in school. I'm asking the board to do something because quite frankly, our MOU is a great step in the right direction, but it's relying on a da- a data point that not only relies on a numerator that is incredibly variable based on testing capacity, but isn't even being published and hasn't been published published for eighteen days. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, next is Kaylee Byrne.
Hi, um, my name's Kaylee Byrne and I am a teacher at Isaquah Middle School. Um, I first want to compliment those first two students that spoke. They did such a good job. I'm sure their teachers are proud and I know their teachers are proud because I'm proud. Um, I'm sure their families are proud. It's really hard to do. So great job. Um, I also really, I feel what they're feeling. Um I'm worried about their mental health more than anything. I mean, I try to check in on my kids every day um just on their mental health and in constantly trying to show them the resources that we have for them and um I'm trying to give families resources we have and um it's very hard and it's um I'm I'm seeing a counselor like it's a great bar for me as well. Um, I feel it. Um, and I'm hopeful though, um because we do, we just started our first club this week for gaming and um my students have never been more excited. I like they watching them plan this whole thing has been amazing. Um, and if their ASP wants to reach out to me, I'm happy to tell them how we set it up. Um, but I'm really here right now to talk about um my equity concerns with going back to school. Um, we need more mental health supports and we need more special needs supports with online learning. Um, so what that tells me though is that when we go hybrid, like those are the students that we also need to be taking into consideration first. And I know that that's on a lot of people's radar, but I just want to make sure that when we start sending kids back into school, we're really thoughtful about who we're sending back. Um, because we are not, I I read this thing that was like, we're all, we're all in the storm together, but we're not on the same boat. Like some of us are in yachts and some of us are on planks of wood and that really speaks to me because even teaching, it's so different. I have friends that are teaching. I have friends that are teaching, and they're in huge houses, and I'm like, oh, my gosh, I'm in a tiny apartment. Like, it's just, it's different for everyone. And I just, I worry that if we make it a choice, that might not be equitable either. So I just want to make sure that that is a part of the conversation. And especially with all, I feel like we're getting, like, threats for, like, not getting funded in the future. Unfortunately, I think that's gonna hurt our struggling students the most, and that's really scary and sad to me. So I hope that, I just hope that we can be a little bit kinder in how we're thinking about all of this. Because it's, it's hard for everyone, and we're in a pandemic, like, this is hard. So thank you so much for your time and for listening, and thanks for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you very much for your input. And the last person I'm going to call on is Jody Mull. Jody, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me, see me?
I can hear you, I can't see you.
There we go. Hi, my name is Jody Mull, and I had three daughters who graduated from Isquah High School, and I am a parent educator at Pine Lake Middle School, and I am immune-compromised. And just want to share that even though I am, I am ready to go back to school. I also want to thank you as a district and as a school board and Superintendent Thiele for having this agreement that you presented to the union this summer. And it took ten meetings, not because of you guys, but because of the IEA and not the individual's teachers to get this signed. So thank you for wanting to get our kids back this summer. The conversations and the frustrations that parents have, I totally get. I would encourage others to really have a lot of their conversations going to the IEA versus thinking this is the district that is something they didn't want. The teachers are working so hard. The teachers that I work with at Pine Lake are amazing. The energy they're putting in, they're working twice as hard. So this is not a teacher thing, this is a remote learning thing. And thank you as a school board and as a district for having the same, the same MOU this summer. These kids could have been in school this fall. So thank you for wanting what was best for our kids this fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Jody. So that's gonna be it for, oh, all right, there's one more hand. We'll let the last person go, but this is it. Candace Verde.
Hello. Can you guys hear me and see me?
Yes.
Wow, last spot. Save the best for last, right? I wasn't going to speak again. I've spoken a couple of times, but there were a couple of things that I wanted to add to what everybody else has said tonight that maybe haven't been communicated and things that I'm thinking about. First, I wanted to thank you all for the MOU. It's a baby step, but it's a step. I don't feel encouraged by it, though, however, because I have two students, one who's an eighth grader at Maywood, and one who's a sophomore at Liberty. And I don't really see a future that gets them inside of any school building this year, and that's very frustrating and hopeless to be feeling like that, as positive as I want to look at it. Positively, we just started football pods. Last week was the first day. And then this week, we've already had one session on Tuesday for the football players for Liberty, and it was like a highlight of the week. I mean, just seeing, I'm not gonna get upset, but just seeing those kids running in their pods with their coaches, taking their time out, who are also teachers, to be with those kids is like everything. Especially as we get into these darker, shorter days and, and months, we need those things for our kids, and we need more of those activities for all of our athletes to be able to participate and get out and get away from a screen. I guess what I'm thinking about is, this is difficult for everybody, and I know teachers are working hard. I used to be a teacher. It's the hardest job in the world, and that's why I'm not a teacher anymore. I'm, I'm just a mom. But, you know, I guess what I would ask the district to think about is, is this is our opportunity to lead from the front. Neighboring districts are looking at us, and we have the opportunity to leave a legacy, not only with our kids by getting them back in school, but by what we can show other districts that we've been able to forge ahead with instead of being followers. And I think that's a really powerful, powerful position to be in, and we really need to take advantage of it and not use these metrics, not, you know, comfort's not a metric. We've got to get these kids in. They are not just an assessment. They are not a test score. They have mental health needs, and what looks good on paper is not what's happening behind closed doors. So I just ask you to really think about the full student and not just look at assessments, especially for upper-grade students who were not measured in the fall, because there's really no benchmark to measure them by. So their time is, their time is running out, you know, they're graduating soon. So they need to get back in school, all of our kids. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you very much for your input. Thank you to all the people who provided public input, and thank you to all the people who have been sending us emails. We really truly do read each and every one. With that, we are at the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a meeting management tool whereby the board passes multiple items with one motion. The board has reviewed all the items on the Consent Agenda, and any board member may pull an item off the Consent Agenda at any time. Do I have a motion?
I move the Consent Agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so the Consent Agenda passes. And the regular agenda, Superintendent, are there any changes to the regular agenda?
There are none.
Okay, so now we get to the meeting. The first thing that the board did, the board was in a work-study session today from five to six to review part ends two, part one. And we had some discussions with the administration on what was in that end and on some of the detail of some of the links. Anything anybody wanted to add on our work-study? Anne, you've unmuted.
I was just gonna say, we could probably just talk about it when we get to ends two.
That's kind of what I was thinking too, but I didn't want to cut anybody off. Okay, next up is the report out on the WASTA Annual Conference. Because back in the week before Thanksgiving, we all attended the WASTA Annual Conference. And of course, this year, it was virtual. And I have to say, because it gave us a lot of thought, and attending a virtual WASTA conference increased my empathy for what's going on with our secondary students. Because WASTA took a conference that's normally in-person with all of our colleagues from around the state. I thought they picked a good platform. I thought it was easy to navigate. I didn't get lost or thrown out. I found all my classes. I thought the keynotes were excellent. I thought the pre-conference session I went to was excellent. Really just the whole thing. I thought WASTA did everything they possibly could have done to make a virtual conference successful. And I hated it. And I hated it because I wasn't with my colleagues, I couldn't bounce ideas off of each other. We weren't listening to the keynotes together. There was particularly one keynote speaker who clearly was used to feeding off of the crowd. And there was no crowd. The classes were prerecorded with simultaneous chats. And if you paid attention to the chat, you lost the thread of the class, and if you paid attention to the class, you lost the thread of the chat. And it was so tempting to multitask or get a snack, and your screens weren't on. And I don't know, I just felt like I really, really understood what it's like to go to virtual high school. And as I say, WASTA did everything they could do to make it great, so I'm not blaming WASTA. In the same way, I'm absolutely not criticizing our teachers, but there are limitations of remote learning. And when one of our students talked about, you know, staring at a screen for eight hours, yes, I, I felt his pain. So that's kind of my take on the conference. I did think a lot of it was great, but I'm gonna throw it out to the board and have, tell me what the high points were. Marty.
I'd say for me, yeah, I, I echo all of those things of when we get together, and it feels different being able to see people that I don't normally see throughout the year. I think for me, the hardest thing was actually being at conference. It was so easy, and it, and my calendar was so flooded with other things. It was really, that week, it was probably the toughest week for me to be able to sit and do that. I had relatives in town, and to be able to say, oh, I'm gonna go and sit upstairs in my room for six hours was not gonna fly with, you know, two elderly people that needed to be driven around and et cetera. So I think it was too easy to get distracted because we're not at conference, where you're there, you're there for the purpose of learning. And so, yeah, I agree with you, Suzanne. It really made me feel how, how are our kids doing this? And especially if you don't have a parent to say, get back to work. But I would have, there were some things I, I have not been able to figure out how to access, because that's one of the benefits, is we're supposed to be able to access annual conference for the next year and any of those things, but I don't know how to do that. So I'll have to find out. We have a WASTA board meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna make sure that they communicate out, okay, how do I get access again? And I'd also like to think, once we can meet together, maybe finding some modules that we can actually do during a work-study or during our board retreat.
That's a good idea. Anne?
Yeah, I, I like that idea because I think there were a number of good sessions. I ended up picking a couple that weren't so good. And I agree with the sense that it was really difficult to, to dive in and stay with it because there were other things going on, and we weren't, you know, isolated at a conference where this was the only thing we could do. I will say, I once again really enjoyed the Law Conference, which was a pre-conference day. And actually, that one, I sat through the entire thing, the entire day, listening, because it was so interesting and engaging. I really appreciated that piece, learned a lot about the, the laws and rules around all the leave that is available to our employees regarding COVID and the pandemic and the challenges that all school districts are facing. When our employees have so much access to leave and such flexible leave, so that was really interesting. Also talked about the Open Public Meeting Act and some of the rules around that, which also is very relevant. I know they were talking about many school boards aren't even really taking public input live in their meetings. They're just allowing written public input. Made me feel like kudos to us because we have stuck to a format that allows our public to truly be in our meetings and continue to give public input to us, which we have always valued and still do value. So felt good about the way we're doing that. So anyway, that's my sense of it.
Okay, anybody else? Sydney?
Yeah, um, so I have this new day job, and in my new day job, a big part of what my day job is about is, is events. And given the nature of, of distance events, I guess I have a strange opinion about the conference. Like, I couldn't even attend it without spending all of my energy trying to figure out the interface, the access to content, like, how would people experience it? So it actually was this strange experience for me. Yeah, it, one, it was hard. I, I personally work in a twelve-hour-a-day virtual environment. So for me to then do, you know, more and more hours online is incredibly difficult. And then I think the, I, when I picked a, a topic, I also picked poorly. So I picked an incredibly non-compelling topic, which is a big turnoff, so I spent the rest of my time just sort of navigating it. I, I, I really think, it's a, at least in, in my job, what we've gone to is a very different format, which is incredibly brief content in these virtual environments. Like, if you can't get it in ten minutes or less, don't do it. And I, I think that really bears true on what they tried to do. So I get how and why they did it. For me, it was just, it was really difficult to consume. You know, not for lack of people's trying, but just as a format, it's, it's, it's bad. But yeah, unfortunately, I can't remember what I picked now, but it, it wasn't good. So I, you know, I think, I, I think my feedback would be, if, if we have to continue in that format, that it gets to much smaller, crisper nuggets that people can take away in, like, ten minutes or less and not trying to fit their traditional presentation in, like, just posting the video of it.
Director Weaver, I, I too joined the conference and will echo some of the things that I heard about the fact that, you know, kudos to WASTA. They could have just punted and said, we're not gonna do a conference. They did try, and, you know, some of the challenges of presenting in, in a remote setting, like Director Mullins just talked about, it, it's hard. And I've been spending a fair amount of time in our teachers' virtual classrooms. And I have to say, I've, some of our teachers, some of those presenters would be, would, it would be good for them to spend some time in some of the virtual classrooms I've visited because they, they've structured it, as Director Mullins just said, I've been in somewhere. It is just little chunks of information followed by an activity, sometimes a video activity, a breakout room. But I, and maybe it's also a product, you know, I am certainly of a different generation than all of my students, and frankly, than most of my teachers. I'm not a digital native, and as somebody who does spend a lot of time on Zoom and Teams and WebEx platforms, I get it. I, I have a lot of empathy for our students and our teachers and anyone who has to do it. I will say, for me, a couple of things from the conference. There were some, you know, and again, I'm trying to give a lot of grace to people. I'm glad that we presented last at the, the previous year's conference. That was, I enjoyed that. I, I thought back, frankly, to that, those packed rooms where we presented, and I really miss that. But I would say, one session, I, I continue to try to expand my knowledge and of equity and the impact of, of a lack of equity on public school systems. So I did attend a session from the Center for Educational Effectiveness, the folks we are collaborating with on our survey that we just launched out to our families and students, basically on what works to improve the educational outcomes for Black, Latinx, American Indian, low and low-income students. And there was a few nuggets in there. It wasn't life-changing or anything like that, but it's, it's a good reminder for me and, and tips that we can use as a system. And then I, I did enjoy hearing from the author of So You Want to Talk About Race. That was a book study book that we had done. I've read that book. I, I don't want to, I don't want to butcher her name, and I really apologize. In, in Jima Alovo, Aloho. I, I know I'm not saying her name right, but very interesting book, and, and I, I enjoyed hearing her speak with the, the C's, what was it? It was titled, Seize the Equity Opportunity. And, and I, I do believe that we are in a moment of opportunity. And later tonight, when our work's in progress, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to some recent professional development in the equity arena that our administrators just received earlier this week. So that was kind of the highlight of it for me, many of the same struggles that, that we had. And all I can say is, I sincerely, sincerely hope that we get to be back together again in, in person, not just in our classrooms, but in our conferences as well. Because the, the part of it, and you touched on this, President Weaver, is when we're together in those unstructured settings, how many times I have sat next to any of you waiting, you know, debriefing what we just heard or what we just saw, waiting for what we're about to hear, comparing our notes. We just, and then, and then also, and I, and this is important to me, it may not be important to some, there's other conversations that happen in those moments that are just more part of our ongoing relationship building. Because this is an important relationship that we have between our five elected officials and our, their employee, our superintendent. And it's just, we, we're missing out on all of those opportunities, just like our students and are missing out on some of those interactions with their classmates as well. So, but I appreciate, again, that WASTA's efforts to put it on, no criticism there. And, and truly no criticism of the presenters either, because it's, it's just challenging. And, but I appreciated the opportunities. Thank you. And um, but I appreciated the opportunities. Thank you.
Well, and I think it was very much like school in that I normally really look forward to these conferences um, for all the reasons that you just mentioned. And it was as though we took all the fun parts out and we left all the work. Because it's a balance of work and fun. And pretty much all the fun stuff was gone and we had the work, which was staring at the screens. Um, now, because I started out on sort of a, a negative thing, I did want to say, um, in addition to the law conference, which Anna attended, um, Mary Furtakis did a very good session on racism in Washington state history, which was just fascinating. Although she spoke so fast, I think I absorbed about a third of it, but um, a lot of really interesting data there. So that's one, if you want to go back and look at, I would recommend. The other one, um, that I went to that gave me some new ideas was um, there was a session on student representatives and it was put on by Pasco and Riverview. Now, we've heard from Riverview before. Um, but Pasco was kind of interesting because they have three high schools. And yet they use the Riverview model of conducting interviews, selecting a student from each high school and having those three representatives on their board. And it got me to thinking again, because we've always said, well, you know, we've got four high schools, we're about to have five high schools. We can't do it that way. And I thought back to our keynote speaker, like, yeah, we can't do it, but what would it look like if we could? Um, and I think, I think there's more conversation to be had around that. Because I really liked the idea of choosing one representative for the entire year, letting them really immerse themselves in what the board does and how we do it. And um, I would encourage you to watch the first 30 minutes of that session. And let's maybe talk at our next retreat or maybe a work study about, can we do that? How could we do that? Um, because I, I still think um, there's a way to make this better, both for the students' experience and for the board. Because I know we found, when we take students with us to conferences or to Olympia, um, and they get more comfortable with us, we get a lot more interesting input from them. So it's something I would like to continue to pursue. Um, so that's kind of my two cents. Anything else before we go on to the next? Yeah, okay. Um, and with that, um, we are on to the high school ISD live survey results. And I'm assuming Superintendent, that uh, you and Josh are going to uh, lead us off on this?
Yeah, um, Deputy Superintendent is gonna uh, lead us through this conversation. Um, just wanted to um, remind the, the public what we're talking about here. Uh, back in the summer, you'll recall, we did a lot of work as uh, planning for a hybrid open. And then um, when we had the, the uh, big increase in COVID cases spike um, in late July, pivoted to the full remote open. And um, at that time, as that was all being developed and approved, we had said, we would do some kind of dipstick checkpoints along the way to see how the system was working. And one of those was a commitment to uh, review the high school schedule. So uh, Dr. Almi and Executive Director Hood and the team um, put together a survey and um, to ask some questions of students, staff and parents related to the high school schedule. And Josh is gonna present um, kind of our read on that data and um, have a conversation with the board and um, potentially see if um, we want to take an action or anything as well. So Dr. Almi, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to you.
Thank you Superintendent Thiele and uh, uh, for anyone uh, in the public out there listening, uh, all of the survey results from the high school sc- uh, from the uh, high school schedule survey that we did. Uh, if you want to access those, you can go to the district website. Uh, you uh, pull up the uh, district uh, banner and then go down to survey reports and then choose high school uh, remote uh, uh, remote schedule survey. And all of the survey results are there, so I just want folks to know that. Uh, the uh, very quick PowerPoint that I'm gonna share with folks tonight, and I think I have sharing capabilities here, so. Let's see that I do. Uh, Superintendent Thiele, do folks see that?
I do.
Perfect. So uh, wh- what I put together uh, in uh, working with uh, Executive Director Donna Hood, who's on with us tonight too, and she can fill in some of the blanks as I go through this, is just a very brief summary of uh, the survey results specifically from three questions. We asked a lot of different questions on the survey because we wanted to know how students and staff and parents were feeling about different aspects of the high school remote learning. Uh, but what I tried to do, what we tried to do was to pull out uh, just a couple of key questions uh, from the data to help the board uh, have the conversation tonight uh, on the high school schedule for second semester. Uh, so again, uh, pretty quick PowerPoint, I will try to not take up too much time and preserve the time for the board to have their discussion. So, main takeaways from the survey data. When looking at the district as a whole, the data did not suggest that stakeholder groups wanted to change to the current remote schedule. That's when we looked at all four of our high schools and all of the data. I mean, I'm gonna, we've got some slides here after this that will look at the district as a whole and then we'll look at each individual school. Uh, when breaking apart the data by individual buildings, three of the schools, Gibson Eck, Issaquah High School and Skyline High School have data that suggests no desire or no strong desire to move to a different remote schedule. And I, again, uh, the other slides uh, coming up here in a second, we'll take a peek at that data. However, Liberty High School data showed a desire to move to a different schedule for second semester. We've got a slide to show that as well. And also, the Liberty High School data suggests that the desire to move to a different schedule would be one that blocks Monday and Tuesday in addition to Thursday and Friday. And just as a reminder, uh, this summer, uh, I was part of a work group with a whole host of folks uh, where we were planning hybrid learning at that time. And we had, uh, the district had not made the decision at that time to begin the, the year in all remote. Uh, and we took the uh, information the best that we could to create schedules at the elementary, middle and high school uh, uh, to start the year in a remote fashion. Uh, the high school schedule right now in remote has at all three high schools going through all of the periods, Monday and Tuesday, and then blocking on Thursday and Friday. So if you are an Issaquah High or a Skyline student, you would do periods one through seven on Monday. You do periods one through seven on Tuesday and then you would block uh, on Thursday and Friday. Liberty is a little bit different, but similar, uh, they do that same thing, but they have an additional period. So they go one through eight on Monday, one through eight on Tuesday, and then they block on Thursday and Friday. So when we look at the district-wide results, uh, there were three questions from the survey. There was a bunch of questions on the survey that hit on some different areas. But we pulled out three questions just for this PowerPoint, which one of those was, how frequently would you prefer your stu- your students' classes to meet remotely each week? Uh, and if you look from the parent perspective, eh, about 85, 84% wanted three meets or more per week from a student perspective. Uh, it was about 68% wanted three ti- uh, three meets or more per week. And from a staff perspective, uh, it was about 70% wanted three meets or more per week. The second question, which length of time would you prefer your, for your classes to meet? And there were two choices. There was the 40 to 60-minute choice, because that's what the Monday and Tuesday meet periods look like right now. And then there was the 60 to 80-minute choice, that's what the blocking sections look like right now. And from a parent perspective, about 80% liked the 40 to 60. From a student perspective, about 77% liked the 40 to 60. And from the staff perspective, uh, then not gonna say that that's an equal split, but the 40 to 60 was about 58% and about 41% for the 60 to 80. I think a really important question, I'm not gonna say that it's the most important, but I think it's an important question uh, was the last one that we asked in the survey, which was, if remote learning continued into semester two, would you like to see the current remote schedule changed or have it stay the same for semester two? From a parent perspective, again, not a 50/50 split, uh, 45% change, 54% stayed the same. From the student perspective, 58% change, 41% stayed the same. From a staff perspective, 48% change, 51% stayed the same. Now, when we go to individual school data, it starts to break out a little bit differently. When you look at the, and I will just go to the right-hand part of the screen, uh, do you want the schedule to change or stay the same? Issaquah High School, uh, the parent perspective, uh, 60% stayed the same. Student perspective, uh, uh, 54, almost 55% uh, 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 had, had put in for a change. And a staff perspect- the staff perspective, Issaquah High, 73% stayed the same. Um, so again, well, now we are looking at specific school data. Uh, if you go to the left of that screen a little bit, uh, you will see that there is an overwhelming majority from the Issaquah High survey results of desiring the 40 to 60-minute uh, time periods, which those are the time periods that we meet on Monday and Tuesday. Superintendent Thiele, I see a hand in the air.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if I'm seeing the right screen or not here, Josh. Um, I'm still seeing what I thought was... Is this just Issaquah High that we're looking at now?
Yeah, this is just Issaquah High right now.
And your, your parents, um, for stay the same, 40.73, am I looking at the right slide?
Uh, no, my parent, uh, the, uh, for the Issaquah High slide, stay the same for parents is 59.27.
Yeah, see, I'm not, I'm seeing your, the slide before that.
Okay.
It looks like it's, it's li- looks like it's overlaid over your Issaquah High slide.
Okay, is that?
There you go. Uh...
No, but, that's the Issaquah High.
Oh, that's it. Okay, there we go.
Okay, okay. Uh, I, I, not as tech savvy as some uh, on the screen share, but...
It might have been me, Josh, not you.
No, no, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that, we're living and learning and we're just gonna keep getting better. So uh, we're on the Issaquah High slide right now. Uh, and then if you go to the left, and again, Issaquah High, when you look at the uh, meets per week, what, how many meets per week do you desire? The parents looks like they're desiring about eh, 83% uh, three meets or more, three, four or five. From the student perspective, uh, about 70% uh, want three, four or five meets per week. From a staff perspective, uh, looking at about eh, 88%, 87% three, four or five meets per week. So that is one of our high schools, Issaquah High. Let's take a peek at Skyline. On the right-hand side of the page, the, would you like to see a change or stay the same of the current remote schedule? Parents, uh, 66, almost 66% wanted to stay the same. From the students, 54% stayed the same. And from the staff, 60% stayed the same. In the middle, similar to uh, somewhat similar to Issaquah High. Uh, ma- majority there, uh, wanting, uh, liking the 40 to 60-minute periods, those are the ones that we have on Monday and Tuesday. Uh, 85% from the parents, uh, for the 40 to 60 minutes. 91% from the students for the 40 to 60 minutes. And 65, almost 66% from the staff for the 40 to 60 minutes. And then over to the left, uh, again, uh, high, uh, 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 high majority wanting the three, four or five meets per week. Uh, uh, from a parent perspective, about 70% from students wanting three, four or five. Uh, and uh, about 85% of teachers, staff members wanting three, four or five meets per week. And then if we go to Liberty High School, and this is where the data breaks out a little bit. If you look to the right side, do you want the current remote schedule to change or stay the same? Parents, 70% change. Students, 81% change. Staff, 92% change. Uh, I, I'm gonna speak to this middle piece here in just a second, but there is um, not quite as high percentages on the length of time. However, uh, the parents uh, slightly preferred the 40 to 60 minutes. The students, eh, pretty equal split there. Uh, the teachers, uh, vastly preferred the 60 to 80-minute uh, uh, time for uh, uh, length of time for classes to meet. And then on the left side, uh, the uh, how frequently, how many meets per week? Uh, the parents uh, preferred about 70% three, four or five times. So that, that part didn't necessarily jive with the other two pieces of data. The students, uh, about 50/50, 50% of them roughly wanted three, four or five meets per week. About 50% were fine with two or one. Uh, uh, and then the staff, uh, it looks like almost about 70% uh, w- were preferable to the two or one time per week. Uh, and then about a little over 30% for the three, four or five. And then one more quick slide on Gibson Eck. Uh, uh, and, and those questions on that survey were a little bit different because the program we were on at Gibson Eck is different from the uh, comprehensive high schools. But one question that we had, stay the same or change? Uh, parents, 80% stayed the same. Students, 50/50. Staff, about 67% stayed the same. So final slide before we open it up for, uh, so the board can uh, converse about the uh, uh, remote schedule for high school, logistics of a schedule change. Although the Liberty High School data suggests a desire for periods to meet in the 40 to 60-minute range, if an all-block schedule were to be implemented for second semester, it's recommended by staff to make the block periods run for 80 minutes per class period to stay consistent with the state requirement of 1,665 minutes. A proposed change to the Liberty School, uh, High School schedule would have classes meet four periods a day and each class would meet twice a week. Currently, classes are meeting three times per week. So going to a block schedule on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, that change would be meeting twice a week, not three days a week, which we currently do in the remote schedule right now. The current remote high school schedule is similar to the Issaquah High and Skyline High School pre-COVID seven-period day. Meaning on three of the five days before uh, we got into the pandemic, the seven-period day met in all seven periods and then blocked on two periods. Uh, Liberty High School has an additional eighth period, as we all know in their schedule. And then lastly, and I think we saw that uh, in the data, overwhelming majority of parents, students and staff at Liberty High School would like the remote schedule to change for second semester remote learning. That's just, was a takeaway from the data. So uh, again, the data is on the website for the public to see. Um, just tried to pull together uh, some of the uh, uh, some of the takeaways that we had. And, and before I turn it back over to Superintendent Thiele and the board, uh, Executive Director Hood. Uh, any, anything that I missed, uh, or anything to add?
No, I, I think you really hit it. The only um, thing that you and I have talked about many times, that's probably just an important reminder for folks listening. When we set about creating a schedule, our CFO did have some um, instructions for us about the minutes that we had to meet this calendar year, this school calendar year. And those 1665 um, minutes are, are pretty important in terms of receiving funding. So that's just something I wanted to remind folks of.
I, I guess too, I would um, just note, I wasn't that surprised by the data because you have a history of a block schedule at Liberty. So when I look at things like the teachers are more comfortable at Liberty teaching in a longer period, well, that makes sense, they have a long history have, of having done that. So I wasn't that surprised by this. I think the other thing that would be important for the board to know is they start to ask their questions is um, so uh, uh, we, we talked about, we, we do have minute requirements as uh, Executive Director Hood pointed out and our CFO gave a big thumbs up too, because we gotta stay in compliance and we want to make sure our funding keeps rolling in. Um, and um, so I think that, that's important. But then the question would be, um, is this something that would be doable? So if we in fact wanted to um, make that change for the second semester at Liberty, is that something that i- is doable? Um, I guess just at a very high level, that wouldn't have any kind of a detrimental impact on students' ability to acc- accrue credits or anything like that?
Uh, no, I thi- uh, is that a question Superintendent Thiele?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think it's important to put that out there before we start our discussion.
Yes, I, it's doable, I just uh, uh, obviously second semester starts at the end of January. Uh, so there are some uh, logistical things that would need to be done before that, but um, yes, it's, it's very doable.
Okay.
Dr. Almi, real quickly, I, I assume you kept Wednesday intact as a remote day, is that, or a...
Uh, correct, I have not, I have not uh, drawn up any type of new schedule right now because uh, we just, you know, last week got the data and have put this together and, and uh, are having the discussion now. Uh, but uh, uh, my thought is uh, that the Wednesday would remain the same.
And you know, one other thing I should point out, I guess, before the board has their conversation is we've looked at this and talked about this. Um, I did a review of EL 10 as well, because if you'll recall, the board will recall, what happened last um, late July, I believe it was on the 29th of July. Um, I recommended and you all approved um, a change in, in all of our schedules, if you will, to go into a fully remote open of the school year. And that came with different schedules for all of our schools. Um, EL 10 does not give me the authority to just independently... EL-10 does not give me the authority to just independently change the configuration of a school schedule. So I, my read on this is that if we were going to do this, it would likely require a board action.
That would be my read on it as well.
Yeah, cuz it clearly would be a change of the configuration of the schedule.
Okay, we ready to go to board questions? Cuz it looks like Sydney and then Marty. Sydney.
So I guess I'm struggling with the conclusion about Liberty. So when I look at the data, the parents are saying they wanna meet more per week in less, in shorter periods of time. And a conflicting message of wanting to change. The kids are relatively ambivalent, if you look across their mix. The staff is where I see more of a direct push toward moving back to the old schedule, not the parents or, or students. And I mean, all the students want change, so it's not like, even though the rest of their data doesn't conflict. So I'm struggling with the conclusion that the data tells us that, like, we should even consider this.
Yeah, it's a challenge because, you know, for the students, eighty-one percent wanna change, but yet they, they didn't pick that time schedule that would allow for a change. So it's like, I wanna change, but I still wanna only meet, well, it's split between the forty to sixty minutes or sixty to eighty minutes.
Right, they're split on, on the change to what?
Right, and even the number of times per week. I mean, fifteen percent, so forty-six percent wanna meet three or four times per week. But yet, which is what they do three, three times for a week now.
Right.
So that would imply no change, but yet the overall answer, when you asked, do you wanna change, was yes.
Yeah, yeah, my take on the middle portion of the forty to sixty minutes is Donna and I and Superintendent Thile and a few others that chatted about, is we inferred, we could have inferred incorrectly, but that there was a desire to go to a block schedule but have each period only meet forty to sixty minutes. But in order to meet the sixteen sixty-five, if we were going to go on a block schedule, we need to have those same minutes in class that we would have on the current schedule right now, and that would mean going the full eighty minutes. Not, not the forty to sixty. Donna and my Executive Director Hood, is that...
Yeah, I'm afraid both of those wishes probably should not be granted. I think Mr. Cooper might be very upset with me if I entertained it for very long because it would, I think, jeopardize full funding.
Yeah, yes, and I didn't wanna... The board action is required if the superintendent makes significant changes to any secondary school building schedule configuration, e.g. block schedules, six-period days, semester, or trimester without board approval. So the grade configuration part is that first part, Superintendent Thile. You know, if you were gonna make Liberty a six through twelve, as an example, we're not doing that, everybody.
Right.
Just as an example. So the board, depends on how you read. If you're going back to an old block, I don't know if they would need to approve it, but they may, given that it could be slightly different. So I just wanted to put that on the table.
Yeah, I had the same read, Mr. Cooper. It wasn't crystal clear. And just even to Director Mulling's point, the, the conclusions, I guess, that we drew, those were not... Yeah, the data was not, you know, really clear. I agree with Executive Director Hood. I think if we were able to drill down even deeper, it felt like what they wanted was the block schedule with shorter periods, which is something that we can't, we can't do.
So now, one thing that might be helpful to note, and I see I'm starting to freeze, so let me just stop video for a second. It might be helpful to just know that we did ask students also about how many times they're released to do off-screen work. We were curious about that. And there are, most of our students said between one and four times a week they're released to do something off-screen, whether they come back or are in a breakout group or reading a passage or something and then returning to the screen. So that changing the configuration of the class times does not preclude a teacher necessarily from making that instructional choice.
Okay, Marty had a comment.
Well, I think I had a few. One is procedural, is that we put this item on the agenda and I did not know that it would have required action, so it is for presentation only. So we don't have authorization to take action, cuz you don't have it listed. So I think it would be a discussion of whether or not we think this is a serious enough change that we would want to take action. If so, then we would have to do that at our next board meeting. For me, this is not a surprise. It's not a surprise at all. I mean, I think I said that the second I saw the schedule, I'm like, eight periods in a day, kids aren't gonna want that. And they told us, eighty-one percent are like, yeah, that's not working for me. So how we solve it, we didn't offer them options to solve it. I think really, we could have just done the survey for the Liberty students, asking them, here's some options, which one would you prefer? I don't know, if we, if we do think that the board needs to take action, would we want some type of more directive to the students and to the faculty? I think what did surprise me was that the, even our, even our staff is telling us, yeah, eight periods in a day, for them, instructionally, isn't working. For them, trying to prepare for a class more often than how they were doing it before. So I think if the teachers aren't feeling prepared, can they really give the students the level of educational support and programming that they need? So I think if we're finding our staff saying, this isn't working, it's not working well for, for me as a staff member trying to teach, it's not working for the students to be able to receiving and get that learning, then I think it's imperative that we do something about that. For parents, I mean, even parents are seeing, you know, seventy percent of parents are seeing it's not working for their students. So I think change is necessary and how that change happens, I'm ambivalent to. I just know that eight periods in a day, I think, is just a push. I'm actually surprised that there aren't more students, you know, at the other numbers. Students are kind of halfway in between, even at the other high schools with seven periods in a day, right? So I thought that was interesting, as far as would they wanna stay the same or change? They're still sitting at about that fifty, forty, one way or the other.
Well, the second part of what we're seeing is what we've been hearing from our students tonight, which is just, we're on the screen too much. We wanna meet fewer times a week for fewer minutes at a session. They're not thinking about the fact that our CFO is gonna tear his hair out because we're not going to meet our funding requirements. And, you know, potentially, we're going to have trouble, teachers are going to have trouble delivering all the instruction that they need to deliver. But, but you can totally see what's happening. They're saying, I'm on the screen too much and I can't, I can't do it. I want, I want less screen time. I'm not at all surprised what we're seeing from Liberty. And, you know, I felt a little bad about this when we put the schedule out in the fall because it did feel like we were pulling the rug out from under the Liberty community a little bit. I understand why we did it. It was because Wednesdays went away and we wanted the three touches per week. But I think, I think that community felt a little like the district was pulling a fast one on them. So it doesn't surprise me that they want back what they know.
Well, and the reality is, board and fellow administrators and community, there's, there's not that many options because it comes down to simple mathematics about what is allowed by the state to constitute a 1.0 student FTE. So there's only so many minutes in the day. And even though they're fairly lenient this year on what counts for student learning towards instruction, you still have to meet a thousand and eighty hours for BEA. You still have to meet a hundred and eighty days, which is why I'm sorry that students said we had to take attendance on Wednesday. That's because we count that as a school day. And if we didn't, we wouldn't be making our hundred and eighty requirements. So it's, it's a, it's a rather small and narrow mathematical box when you're trying to put these schedules together. And you have to also account for teacher prep. And, and in our secondary world, daily prep, unless the staff member waives it. So I'm not surprised with the staff's response because, you know, they, they'd like longer contiguous preparatory periods. So the fact that they wanted longer periods that they're used to doesn't surprise me at all. But the reality is, you're pretty confined mathematically, given our bell times and the structure of the, of the funding and the seat time state that we live in.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we didn't ask the, we didn't frame the survey that way. Do you want longer periods and fewer meets or shorter periods and more meets? Okay, Anne, and then Sydney.
I just wanted to clarify, are the Thursday, on Thursday and Friday, or is it currently an eighty-minute class period?
Yes.
Right, so I mean, mathematically, it seems like the only option would be to make Monday and Tuesday identical to Thursday and Friday.
That really is the option, Director Moore. You could, and I asked the team too. I said, so is this something we could do, we could do in this timeframe that wouldn't be, you know, disruptive to our students and their ability to accrue their credits? And that is basically the option that's left to you. You basically go back to Liberty being a fully blocked, every day is a blocked day. Four periods a day, Monday, four periods a day, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, which, kinda to Director Weaver's point, that's really what they know. That's, and so I think partly, even though it's only in its second year, Issaquah High and Skyline, they also know, while they may not love it, what it feels like to have seven periods in one day. They, they had that last year as well. So, you know, you'll recall, we've, we've surveyed about schedules before, as you all know. We've, we've had high school schedule conversations many times over the years. And typically, students in particular will tend to vote what they know. That's what we've experienced with surveys that we did through our high school scheduling committees as well. So that, it didn't come as a surprise to me that way. And it didn't surprise me that they would want to have their kind of traditional block days only, but with shorter periods, given that it's happening in a virtual setting. It's just, and, and I get it, I mean, that it's, it's not our students and frankly, even our teachers' jobs to have to understand all of the rules and regulations that we have to live by to manage the school district. And so, you know, there's just detail there that they might not be aware of, like Jake was saying. We have to take attendance on Wednesdays, or else we don't get to count that day. And by law, we have to have a hundred and eighty days, things like that.
And with the, if you just made Monday, Tuesday, just like Thursday, Friday, is there any problem with the teachers' prep time or when?
No, and Anne, that's a great question. So Mr. Martin, when he builds his master, looks at a prep for the A-day and the B-day already. So that was already built in, and it would just be replicated then Monday, Tuesday.
I think the only mathematical issues you would have is depending upon a student's schedule, calculating their running start FTE.
Yes, we also have a few students, Jake, who take Algebra II and Biology at Liberty from Maywood. That, that's not a huge number, never is, but we always have to figure out how to make that work regardless of the situation. What I was gonna mention as well, I heard in the board discussion, and I'm just throwing this out there as an option, about maybe wanting to get more information from students at Liberty. Obviously, the timeline is tight, but if the board wanted us to do that, I believe that we could do that. It would be a pretty tight turnaround, but we could if that was something the board wanted.
Well, I mean, if we're gonna decide to change, there really is only one option. Though I, I don't know that, that we don't get to give the kids very many, there are no real options. It's either change or don't change. Unless we were asking them again, but just very directly, would you like the schedule the way you've been doing it for the past semester? Or would you like to go to this schedule, which is, you know, a Monday, Tuesday block, Thursday, Friday block with Wednesday, just like it is?
Right, and we didn't ask that, that's a good question.
I think, given that, we would have some back office work to do if this change was made in my student records department. So there, there would be some ramp up there, you know, changing master schedules and realigning minutes, et cetera, as Donna knows. But, I mean, I would rather, if you were, you know, I am obviously not king of the, this operation at all, but the sooner the better if we're gonna make an operational change so we can get it set up.
Is it enough to deal with this the first meeting in January?
That's, that's, that's what I wanna know is, what was the runway again to, to make the change? Cuz we don't, back together till what, it's...
Fourteenth. Yeah, it, it's tight, but I asked the team before, could we take, could the board take action on that day? And then, cuz it, it's the twenty-second is the last day of the semester, I believe.
Twenty-fifth would be the first day. If the board, you know, or if any decision was made on the fourteenth, it would be a tight window, but I, as a drop-dead date, I believe we could make it work, whatever, if, if a change was made.
We've gotten really good at special meetings, you know.
Oh, maybe we should do one on Friday to decide the Liberty schedule change.
I think really, we've determined Friday meetings are a bad idea.
Again, I wanna clarify, I heard from Dr. Almy, if, and, and again, I think to Anne's point too, there's not like we have a million options here. Basically, what in my mind we're talking about is eliminating the, the eight-period day on Monday and Tuesday and turning them into, to, you know, to four-day periods. And that is something that if we knew on the fourteenth, that evening of the fourteenth, my understanding is, and remember, I've got former high school principals here right now, and maybe even the current ones.
The current one is not as well if you have a question for her.
That could, that could turn this and make it happen. Now, we're talking about some crazy, complete blow-up redo. Yeah, no, that wouldn't be possible in that timeline to get ready for the second semester.
Well, remembering that we're talking about an executive limitation and not a governance process policy, what it says is the board has to approve any recommended schedule change. Basically, the district would have to recommend a change and we would vote it up or down. So weirdness of schedule is under your control. Yes or no is under our control.
It just depends if you read it as a change or not, because you're going back to a block.
I don't know. I read it as a change from what we have. Now, I don't, I throw it out to my colleagues, I think it would require a vote. Marty?
I, I would say I would feel comfortable, for the sake of basically covering the district, I think the board taking a vote provides them cover that they just didn't randomly change something without a chance for people to voice. And if we do do a special meeting between now and the, you know, the end of, before break, it gives, if public can come and give public comment regarding this potential change for the Liberty schedule and let us know their thoughts on it.
That's true.
Or we could open up an avenue for public comment electronically with a potential schedule that we publish now, that they could comment on between now and the beginning of January. I don't know that we, I don't actually think we need a special meeting to, to go through it. I think we can publish the thinking based on the survey results and offer an opportunity for comments. I don't, for me, this isn't special meeting.
My special meeting point was simply to give them more time to implement. Like if, if they needed more, the January fourteenth, and if we had a special meeting, we could make a decision. That was my only reason.
Oh, no, I totally get that part. My point is, it's either gonna be yes or no, so your planning to implement's gonna be the same. So I'd say you put it out for comment, plan to implement in the time period. I just don't think that our, our special meeting is, is, is required. We can get public, I actually like publishing it early so that people can have a sense with it, send commentary and not have it driven by, can you arrive at this meeting? Which, which I think we often are, you know, we get people who can arrive at this meeting, right? There's a lot of people who cannot, and so, who don't have that option. So I would actually prefer to have the opportunity for people to comment in a longer period on this point. I think one last thing, Marty, sorry, is for me, I guess, while I do feel like these survey results say both parents and students are ambivalent about the change, I do think it's important that they, they are signaling that something needs to change. And if, if the teachers are saying that this is the thing, then I think that's important to respect that perspective as this is what we need in order to be successful and to help our students be successful.
Marty?
Well, I was gonna say, now I've lost my train of thought. But back to whatever kind of vote, I, I don't think we have it anywhere in our governance policies around any electronic voting, and I don't know what the legality is. But because this is an up or down vote, we've already received essentially the presentation. Don't know that there's gonna be a whole lot of conversation around it, but I don't think we have that means, at least not in our policies. And I don't even know what the state requirement is, but it might... And I don't even know what the state requirement is, but it might be something interesting to look into.
Yeah, I, I'd wanna be a little careful about that, we could certainly research it, but you know, I, it's, it's interesting, this conversation and the, the potential of getting out of whack with the O S P I minutes and now maybe a potential way of voting on it. Um, I just wanna remind us all seventeen consecutive years of clean audits. And there's some, there's some danger in some of this, again, I do wanna, so in my thinking would be, and, and I don't, I haven't, I don't have any great creative offerings here, and we could certainly communicate back through directly to the Liberty community, that, that, I don't think that would be that difficult, I suspect a lot of that's probably happening right now between text and social media and other things, as some of them are aware of this conversation happening. Um, but it would likely be, I mean, and, and I, from what I know now in the conversations I've had, the recommendation would likely be to um, change the schedule, as I just described it a minute ago, from Monday and Tuesday, meeting all eight periods to uh, blocking those two days. So you'd have one through four on Monday and five through eight on Tuesday and, you know, that, you're and so that is a relatively simple thing that I believe we could implement in turn very quickly. I, I don't think we would need a special meeting for it, we would just need to make that decision on the fourteenth.
No, I think my staff, backend staff can do it, and it's eighteen clean audits if you're counting superintendent on seventeen.
Oh, that's right, I forgot, I can't believe I forgot one of those, Mr. Cooper.
But I, I think we could do it if, if the board uh, believes they need to take a up and down vote on it, then in the back office, we should be able to do it uh, on the fourteenth. I would just reserve the right currently to do the math on whatever Dr. Almi and Donna Hood uh, bring to me, not that they're not good at math, but uh,
Former math teacher Jake.
I have to do some state, state uh, finance mathematics on it, which sometimes uh, varies on what you can count, but if it's the same as you described, I think it's, it's uh ninety nine point nine percent gonna be compliant um, with the state requirements, and as superintendent told me, if they can, if we can give the community what they want, and it's legal and not it really, it's not really expensive, then let's do it.
Right, I do think, I, I do like Sydney's idea of putting it out there saying the, the administration is planning to make this recommendation to the board on January fourteenth, whatever it is. Um, of, you know, changing it to the block, but being very clear about the fact that it will have to be eighty minutes and be very clear about why it has to be eighty minutes, and solicit um, input to the board. And um, written input, that would be nice.
Right.
And uh, and we will be happy to read it, and that would um, obviously influence our vote.
Right, and I, and I think from the survey that it's very clear, both parent, student and staff want change. I think where you get the, the that you want your cake and eat it too, is the idea that you could have change and only that you'd meet twice a week with longer periods, but what you really want is to meet four times a week with shorter periods. But the reality is, that's just not gonna be what's gonna happen. If, if there's to be a change, it would have to be a change to meeting two times a week with long periods. And so putting out that exact schedule and soliciting feedback is, is the way that would help us move forward.
Right, because this is what happened when we talked about bell times, and we discovered that students wanted to start later and leave earlier. If, if we can't.
I do too.
Yes. I agree.
Our students are brilliant.
I do think it is important with this, though, that we have some sort of I don't know, guidance, because those are long periods, and we just finished talking about the longer, just on screens, isn't necessarily more higher quality, so I think that's a real, for me, that's a real concern. When I see going to just two and making them longer, that just seems like a lot, uh, so I don't know if with that, there can be some sort of guidance on and I realize different subjects require different things, and that's up to, to, to teacher um, decision discretion. But I think there has to be at least some conversation about, you don't get to just lecture now for eighty straight minutes, cuz that's, that's not great. Not a great outcome.
Right, and some of that, hopefully, they already know from the Thursday, Friday, where they have exactly eighty minutes already, and they have to teach to that. So we can hope.
Liberty teachers, so they're used to it, my bigger concern was when we got to Skyline and Issaquah. Do those, you know, have those teachers had professional development around teaching to a longer period, because they're very used to, I teach six periods a day.
Yeah, no, my, my point is more, I think there's many people accustomed to also talking for eighty minutes.
Yeah, that I don't know.
I mean, yeah, we have um, just, we have drifted um, into a, a different part of the conversation, but absolutely, you, I, as somebody who taught in traditional seven period day, traditional six period day, and in a blocked um, period um, configuration, you're right, you, first of all, you should never speak to any group of any age for eighty consecutive minutes, um, that would be my recommendation. Um, and I think a bigger challenge is actually not, I think our teachers are pretty skilled and and working in extended periods and working, you know, with, with whatever amount of time, whether it's a fifty four minute class period or an eighty. I think it's the conversion of what you do in brick and mortar into this virtual remote world has been even a bigger challenge, I, I know that it would have been for me, or would be for me, so. Um, and I think our teachers are figuring that out, based on my experience visiting classes, I, I I am seeing, and I, and I wanna go back to the point that Executive Director Hood made too. We're not telling teachers, you must lecture for eighty minutes, or the, you know, they can, stu- students can and are, and it's, it it bears that out, the survey data. They are being released to go do independent work as well. It's just different, when you're in a brick and mortar world and you give your students time to do independent work, you you uh, monitor by walking around, as we like to call it. Well, you can't do that in a virtual world, you basically just say, okay, you can, you can go away now, and you know, I'm not, you're not sure exactly what's happening, I'm sure, but um, so yeah, there are some challenges there, I guess my question too would be um, to Dr. Almi, that um, if, is this, I, I mean, we, we could do what I've heard the board ask, you know, we could put the schedule out, we could put the, the rationale for why it has to be, why this would be my recommendation to the board on January fourteenth, um, put some explanation in there about BEA minutes and things like that, so that people understand that. And then solicit the feedback, you know, um, and I'm sure we'd get a lot of feedback. And um, that would potentially be helpful to the board, and then I could bring an up or down um, kind of decision on the fourteenth, and we'd see where it lands.
I mean, would you also consider survey, I mean, if we're going to be that explicit now, it's either what they have or it's this Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, four by four-ish, right? And have to survey the kids again? I mean.
We could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm.
Timeline's a little tight, but we could do it.
Yeah, you probably wouldn't get that, you wouldn't be able to keep your survey open as long and things like that, we'd work with Principal Martin and.
One question survey.
Yeah, exactly.
Wouldn't be a long survey, yeah.
Right.
I mean, that might be better if we could pull it off.
I, I, we can pull it up.
So it, it, it's, it feels to me, sounds to me like that's what the board would like us to do, is to uh, to go out, gather that information from the Liberty students and community. Um, put it back on, and then I'll work with President Weaver and um, past President Meraldo in agenda planning. Get it on the agenda, if that's what we wanna do, and um, for, for potential action. And then in, in that, in between time from now and then, we would gather that data for the board and for the staff to look at as well.
Uh, and Superintendent Philly, just to, to be clear, I heard two things, and I wanna make sure before we move on that I got those two things right, which is number one, that we would survey one more time Liberty students with the real specifics about uh, uh, a- any possible change, it would be this, or you would stay on this, and then secondly, uh, also soliciting feedback uh, uh, from the uh, uh, from the community and whatnot. Uh, so there's kind of two banks of feedback that we'd be working on over the next month.
Right, now would we survey the parents and staff as well?
Well, I didn't hear that from the last conversation, but we can keep conversing about that, and if we need to do that, we could do that too.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there, because we, we went out to parents, students and staff and asked these questions. If we're thinking about making a change, and we're now saying you have choice A or choice B, would we ask all three groups?
Well, it, it would not be that difficult to do it with all three groups than to just one, because we are already set up uh, uh, as we've just completed the survey already, so we could, we could do that as well if we needed to.
Yeah, and all of this really goes to our superintendent, cuz he gets to make the decision of a recommendation to us.
Yes.
I mean, ideally, yeah, I would, I would like to see the feedback from the three groups. But I don't wanna create a ton of extra work.
I don't think it would be.
Cuz I think, isn't there an engagement when going out, so we can already find out how engaging, cuz, cuz everybody has the block schedules on Thursday and Friday to know how engaging those longer periods are in general.
Yeah, that survey is currently out, you're correct, Director Meraldo.
We're, we're going to over survey our community.
I, I know, we are doing a lot of that.
But, but on this one, I think the community really cares, I, I, on this, I mean, I saw their desire for change, we're just trying to be clear that you don't get to say I wanna change but still have shorter periods, because if you want the change, you must move to the eighty minute periods on the Monday and Tuesday. So we're just trying to weigh the different things they told us in their response to this survey.
Yeah. Okay, anything else from the board? Are we good, we're good on this?
You got what you need there, uh, Dr. Almi?
Yep, and we'll follow up later, I, I think, I think, game plan over the next month, and we'll get it done.
Yeah, great, okay, well, thank you for all that work, and I, I do I know we're surveying our students and our community a lot, I hope they can all bear with this, but you know, when you completely change your school system, you, you do, you need to ask questions along the way, so you know, good teachers, monitor and adjust, and when you're talking about the entire system, there's not a lot of ways for us to monitor the progress, so surveying, it really does help, so I greatly appreciate um, the individuals who take the time and put some good thought into the surveys. And I apologize in advance, and I'll probably have to survey, survey you about other things going forward, but I do appreciate it. Um, but I think it will help, it'll help me, and it will help the board ultimately be able to um, make a decision as well. So, and I, I should have asked this right at the very beginning, Dr. Almi or, or, or Donna, maybe you even said something. But was the participation numbers pretty high in the surveys, did we have good participation?
I am going to pull that up for you, I think we had over seventeen hundred respondents, and now I can't remember if that was total, so I will pull it up.
I remember there, that, that it looked to me like good, we had like five hundred students at Issaquah.
Hundred total respondents at the high school level.
Yeah, it was, it was, I thought it was good.
Yeah, that, that does, that's, well, I think that's important, because you know, we often will hear voices um, that folks for Public Emporor who will email us, and um, and a lot of times, it can be very compelling in the information they're sharing, but you sometimes need to test that against a broader audience, if you will, and I thought, that's what we needed to do in this particular instance related to these schedules.
Right, because for, for Liberty High School, as far as I just pulled up this students survey, there were only four hundred and twenty five students that took. So that's a third of the student body.
Yeah.
I do think if we're gonna talk about changing the schedule, it would be good to get that out in front of the students and, and the parents and the staff, but let the students know that we're really talking about a change.
I suspect i- if we ask the question as we were describing it, it's either this or this, that will elicit a higher response rate, I bet.
And if the question, if the survey is only a question or two, um, just by glance, people will see that just in my perspective and and take it quickly and send it in.
Yeah.
That would be my hope.
Great, I, I really do appreciate um, the staff and the board's efforts on this, I know it seems like a lot of conversation, and maybe even a lot of work over, you know, one semester of remote learning, cuz I sure as heck don't plan on being in remote learning forever. And um, but I think it's important, so thank you, everybody, for the time that you put into this. I'll look forward to agenda planning with President Weaver, and um, hopefully we'll uh, have something good to put on the agenda for the fourteenth at that point, and in between, you'll get some data that points for you to all review as well. I think that was it then on that one, if I'm, is that it?
That sounds good. Um, all right, so our next, next up is monitoring report for E two, Academics and Foundations, Part One. And I will look for a motion.
I move the, oh, you wanna go ahead, Marty?
I move the board accept the monitoring report for E two, Part One, Academics and Foundations as presented.
Second.
Okay, and I will throw it to staff? Or will I throw it to the board?
You can throw it to me, and then I'll throw it back, how's that? I, I did wanna make just a couple of statements, and I know the board spent an hour on this prior in a work study, so um, you know, I, you know, I don't have a lot to say, but I did want to share um, some, something that I'm really proud of publicly. Um, this is E two, and uh, for the public, we've broken this into two monitings, cuz there's a lot there. Part one is um, what I kind of think of as your social studies um, uh, language arts, part of the system. And I would just remind people that um, E two is our academics and foundation, and it's where what the board, kind of the goals that the board has set, or expectations for our students upon graduation. So it's kind of like the culmination of their experience in the Issaquah School District. So that we bring a lot of high school um, data i- in this report. Um, but an important piece of that, of course, when we talk about upon graduation, is in fact graduation. And um, we have worked very hard, our, our students, um, our high school teachers, our um, high school administrators, counselors, grad specialists. And one of the things that I've been very proud of during my tenure here is a very high on time grad rate. And one that has actually, it's bounced around a little bit, the last year was the highest since, and, and this is now my eighth year as your superintendent. Um, over ninety three percent, but one of the things that I think is really impressive about that is those numbers have remained high during a time when we've actually increased the rigor and the expectations on our students, we've increased grad requirements. Um, we just have, this board has set, uh, during the course of the last decade, for sure. Um, really high expectations for our students, and I'm really glad that you did that. Because we said it at the time, and we've proven it to be true now. We can, our students can rise to those high expectations. So even in an era of increasing requirements and expectations, our grad rate has continued to go up, and that takes a tremendous amount of effort and work, and again, I just gotta give a shout out to uh, first and foremost, the students doing all of that hard work. Um, and their teachers, and their administrators, counselors, grad specialists. We've made an investment using local levy dollars to support these efforts. And um, it just really heartens me when we do that and we see some payoff, so I'm really and, and, and I think this, that's going to continue as we go forward, we'll, we'll be getting the class of twenty data here in a couple of weeks, um, so. And then I, I would be remiss if I didn't also acknowledge all of the good, hard work and effort that goes into preparing those students once they enter our high schools, so I, I certainly, while graduation is a metric that measures um, high school and on time graduation. We all know as educators, we would never be able to have the success we do if it wasn't for the outstanding education that happens in the elementary and the middle school level, so. It is a system, it is a culmination, and um, I'm just really proud of those um, the, the efforts that folks have put in there, and I just wanted to say that. Um, and then, other than that, I also wanted, um, I, I, I want folks to know in the public, and I know the board knows this, but as we've talked about this, and I know executive knowledge can talk about some of the assessment work, unique assessment work we did this year to try to get a sense of the impact of last spring's emergency online learning that had to occur as a result of the pandemic. Um, and then the ongoing um, impact of remote learning, and we certainly hear stories, and we've heard some tonight about how it's just not working for some students. And we've heard some tonight about how it's just not working for some students, and it's interesting how. Um, some of the same, or some of the traditional demographic patterns that we've seen in the past don't apply here. Um, which is interesting too. So it's a little different for us to try to wrap our heads around this. But um, a lot of effort has gone into trying to, for, to give our teachers and our teachers time to get a sense of. What's been the impact of this? Because once you know that, then you have to really start working on, okay, so what's the recovery plan? How are we going to make some of this, this learning loss back up? And um, one of the things that I've been talking with legislators about as well is to be mindful of the fact. That even when we have a fully vaccinated herd immunity and we are back in session. And my hope will be that 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 would be the case certainly by next fall, if not earlier, that um. The, the cost of this pandemic is going to be borne out for the next two to four years after that. Because uh we're going to have a lot of work to do to catch kids back up and um. And that's going to require time and resources. And I just want our legislators to be mindful of that, that as we go forward. There, there's going to be a bill that's going to come due on what's been happening in terms of remote learning. And so we're going to have to be uh mindful of that. So I don't want to just, I'm gonna step back now, President Weaver. Um, if you have specific questions or things that you would like staff, I know um Executive Director Malish is here and ready to go. There's anything specifically that you would like us to cover or talk about as it relates to this report. Um, we're at, we're here ready for you.
Okay, so I'll throw it out to the board. Are there questions on anything specific? Oh, don't all jump at once. Yes.
Questions all got answered during our work study. Okay.
Um, I did have one link, one question we didn't get to in the work study because I opted for the break. So um, I needed the break. I am. I am. And it's not so much about what's in the monitoring report, but I don't think we've talked about this going forward, particularly in this. This unusual school year, but I was looking at this section on, of course, now I'm not going to be able to find it, but like on the arts. Um. Will we need to, yes, the sec, it's two point five, so. Fine arts, visual arts, performing arts, and do we? Have we started to think about how this might need to look or will it look any different going forward? Or I I guess I, we haven't, I don't feel like I've spent a lot of my brain power on. How different is some of the coursework right now in, in the fine arts? In, in fine arts, visual arts, performing arts.
Superintendent Thiele, I think I could answer a little bit about that.
Do.
Started working with uh our, uh, music teacher leads at the secondary and our elementary music teacher leads as well. And um they also work with the, our fine arts programs throughout. And so we did make some investment in some technology to allow students to be able to collaboratively make music, to sing together, to, to do, to. Arts together. Um, I I'd like to say that we also have been working with them even in the last couple of weeks to um. To add a resource that that wasn't terribly expensive, so I haven't really shared this out with anybody, it might be new to Superintendent Thiele. To allow for performances to happen this year, to find ways to have larger group performances happen. So we're investing in some platforms for that. Our, our middle and high schools, um for every teacher to be able to allow students to perform together. So we, we are trying to use technology to the best of our ability to keep the arts alive and well. Um, I I personally have two sons in the fine arts, so I have a personal connection to this and uh. And my wife gets to work from home. I get to go in the office and her office is on one side of a wall and my son, who is a trombone player. On the other side of the wall. And so, so she gets to a task daily to his uh practice time and um. So I would, I would just say that absolutely the arts have been in attention and we really want to keep it alive during this time. Um, and um I think our teachers are being very creative to to try to give opportunities for that.
We, we actually had a conversation about that today, um Executive Director Melish and I, um Sydney, because. You know, my feeling is what a great time for, for kids to be doing art at home. I, I, you know, I just think that I I can only imagine that right now, and I think about when I was. My wife and I were raising our two daughters, um that, you know, when you have to be at home, I. And spread out on that kitchen table, um having an art project to work on could actually be something that, that would be really nice for a lot of kids. So I really want to encourage us to continue and and move forward, and if we need to try to make. Art materials available to students, we, you know, we have the pickup sessions that we do at each of the schools and. You know, I, and I know that we have done some of that and as it relates to art uh classes and CTE classes, so. Um, yeah, we absolutely, um, it it's. You know, virtual settings are creating challenges for everything in just about every way, but I, I'm glad to hear um director. Uh, Executive Director Malish that we, we purchased some platform software so we can do some concerts because. We want to have some of those virtual concerts. I mean, if, I've actually, none of our school ones, but I've actually participated in a virtual concert. And it was, it was a better experience than I thought it was going to be. And I just saw um Executive Director Morrison's camera light up too, because I know he's been doing some research at the middle schools about. You know, when are you going to do your concerts? How are you going to do your concerts and things like that? I don't know.
I, if somebody is doing a, you know, a open concert that they're inviting people, it would be great to be able to um. Click on that zoom and how, or whatever the platform and see how our kids are doing this.
That would.
Right, Superintendent Thiele, um, I was checking into that with the middle schools uh this week. Um, and uh there are some uh concerts available from Issaquah Middle, where they're recorded, uh previously recorded. Um, and I did watch them, um, I think I watched uh two chorus presentations. Um, the chorus presentations, um, the kids were audible, but the, there weren't live uh singing. Um, there was various backgrounds and pictures going along with the music. Um, and then some band work where the kids actually were on screen, the ones I, I, there wasn't a lot of kids, so I believe it was kids who chose to be on screen. Um, but the rest of the middle schools are planning um virt, some sort of virtual um event mostly pre-recorded. Um, that will likely go live um later this week or next. Um, a lot of the middle schools will be presenting those, so. Um, and that's, that's basically, uh, it looked to me like recording Zooms, so. Uh, Executive Director Melish, I think that the software uh to maybe refine those opportunities will be, I think, well received. Um, but some of those opportunities are available. Um, I've, I've been gathering links from uh my school principals. Uh, this week, and I could go ahead and forward those onto the board um once I have them. Um, like I said, I have Issaquah Middles because they've already ran theirs, but um the other schools are still, as you can imagine, um. Uh, hosting a middle school music concert is a lot of work, um whether it be in person. Um, but there's also a lot of work when you're uh messing with technology and putting it together as well. It's just a different kind of work. Um, so when I get those links, I'd be happy to forward them to uh the board.
Great.
Marty, did I see a hand?
I, I was gonna ask if we could get a way of being able to see them, so he answered that. Oh, and I do have my artist, you know, the one thing that's nice about this is if you're into digital art, you can still do it remotely.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, uh Superintendent Thiele mentioned um, uh our kitchen table is very much an art studio right now for my fifth grader. Um, and uh there's a lot of therapy uh in working with your hands and creating, so uh it's great conversation, great question.
And, and I, I would be remiss to not uh jump in and say that we had a lot of conversation with ISF around the transition of the elementary art programs. And we ended up investing in a halftime TOSA in Karen Harmon and. She has done an incredible job of folding in art into the weekly learning plans available for teachers to give their students and being very creative. And really, since what's fun with her is that she's halftime in art TOSA and halftime as social emotional coach, social emotional learning coach. So for her, it's about folding art and social emotional mindfulness and thoughtfulness with the students and um. I, I, I'm really excited that about the work she's done for our elementary arts this year.
Yeah, that's great. I, I just think there's such an opportunity. And I know my high schooler is taking visual arts, so I get to see a lot from visual arts as a class, but I don't have any performing arts in my house. Um, no, very, I think we, and we missed the recorder conference uh concert for fourth grade last year, so we're still sad about that. Um, but I do think, I do think this is an area, and we talk about sort of engagement and some of those. I guess topics of general joy and hope it would be, this is when I think we have an opportunity to spend a little bit more time of. Of featuring and encouraging participation in and all these different sort of arts categories in, in. In the rest of this school year.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I did want to mention that one of the things we talked about at the work study was the um. The first trimester F and P scores in elementary school and just looking at um. The trends and trying to identify any signs of, of learning loss in the younger grades and that sort of thing. Because I want the public to know that we are absolutely tracking that and keeping an eye on it. So that was one of the things that um, because we didn't record the work study, right?
No, we do. I thought, oh, we don't?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Do we record work studies?
No. I don't believe we were recording the work study, no.
To her point, that's a really good thing to.
Even just confirmed it.
Yeah, we do, okay. Uh, because, because, and Rich can describe it, but the idea that in doing the fall F and P, we were able to see. The loss in first and second graders, but not much loss in third graders, which I think is significant to our point of. At least just in this first phase of trying to bring in our youngest learners, our focus on this. MOU that, that is working towards getting our K three kids in and to the. And you know, it, it is just a step in the direction of getting more and more kids into school. So it is just the first phase, but that is a lot of the, the why is to help with that. Um, loss that was, that is occurring like in first and second graders, but it's, but it was good news to see that the third graders were holding their own.
Yeah, I, I thank you for that, Director Moore, because you're absolutely right. We, we started with the hypothesis that. Um, the remote emergency learning from last spring and continuation would. More negatively impact our youngest learners, and that, that was called out in the Department of Health Decision Tree. The board referenced that on your action in July, and you're, you're absolutely right. The data. Um, is bearing that out, that those students who were in kindergarten and first grade. Um, last year and, and starting this year are first and second grade, um, the impact was greater and, you know. We shouldn't be surprised by that. They've had much less overall exposure to schooling. And as you go up and you looked at that data, you did see that the impact was less on the, on the upper grades. Um, I think that is an important point because I just, I don't want the public who have secondary or children. Fourth through twelfth grade to think that we don't, that, that we're not thinking about them or that we don't care about them. In fact, a lot of our energy is thinking about them, but for the reasons of learning loss. And I, I think it needs to be noted too is um, um, because of the way the virus reacts. In young, very young students versus older students. That's what's driven and motivated a lot of the work that we've been doing to try to get our youngest learners in. I just want to be clear about that. My heart breaks for, I'm, I'm a former middle school um teacher and principal and high school teacher. Um, so I absolutely, and, and raised two children myself, so I know the impact that this isolation is having. And it's, and like I say, it's heartbreaking, but from an academic standpoint, um, we, we now are starting to see data. That is showing those who are the very youngest, um, we're seeing a greater um impact on the learning loss. It's important that we know that and that we can quantify that because that's, as I said right at the beginning. That's, you gotta know what, you know, you have to get your answers and then you can begin your work of your recovery plan. Where to target your resources, if you will, and so um, I, I really appreciate the work of. Uh, Rich, his team and those teachers and students out there, because they had, somebody had to administer those assessments and. The kids had to take them and the, then the analysis of it, but it's been good, important work. Work that, that wouldn't have happened, and then, and as Rich pointed out to you during the, the um. The work study session too, a lot of assessment work at the secondary too. I, again, I don't want people to think that we, we aren't looking at the secondary as well. We are trying to wrap our head around and quantify the amount of learning loss, the type. Um, and then so that we can have good effective plans um to address it. And so I appreciate the work that everybody's done. It's, it's quite sophisticated and um. And it, and, and it's different. It, again, this is something, a lot of the things that Rich was able to present during the work study. These are not things we would normally do. These are being, these are happening as a result of the pandemic.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, I did want to um. Ask if there was any public input, and I neglected to do that for the last agenda item. I'm sorry, I'm still a little rusty at this president stuff. Um, and we don't have a lot of people, non-staff people left in the meeting, but if there is anyone who wanted to give public input. Either on this topic or on the um ISD live survey, please raise your hand in the box. And I don't see anyone, but okay, I just wanted to make sure I did that. Um, and if the board has nothing else, um, we have, oh, Marty.
Just really quickly, just because um the, the last, the work study was not recorded, I still want to publicly say. And just raise back the concern I had before that at Skyline, because they do the. Um, it's IB only and IB is focused, you know, international baccalaureate, it's focused on global. Politics, global information, just global learning, that they are not getting, then, that Skyline students do not have the opportunity. To take an in-depth, year-long course about US government like our other two school dis, schools, uh, high schools do. And that, I, I'm just concerned, especially we're seeing so much. Right now where people are trying to make sense, what is the Electoral College? How is this all playing out? Why is the Supreme Court getting involved? How does all of that work? And if you look at the AP uh US government curriculum, it really goes over the Constitution. The, the founding documents, and I think that right now we're finding that is a real lack of understanding for people. And I don't think it's something that our students that are taking civics, they're getting the basics of how our system works, that hopefully they will be able to participate in that. Um, and have a better understanding, but I think that we're, we're not providing an opportunity. At Skyline for those students to get that in-depth one, and we see at our other two high schools, especially at Liberty, you're talking. Thirty percent of the students, a third of the students are taking that um AP US government and getting that in-depth. Um, in-depth learning, so that's just my sense, and I know staff, staff talked a little bit to that, but I wanted to be able to make that public.
Yeah, and it was surprising, there were considerably fewer students at Skyline who were taking the IB history course. Compared to the students at Liberty and Issaquah that were taking, um, there was both AP history and AP US government, so there was.
It was.
Um, a second option.
Yeah, it was either thirty-two or thirty-seven this past year and whichever one it was, it was the year before, so it was in the thirties.
Yeah. Thank you, Marty, for that. Um, okay, I have a motion on the floor um to accept ends, the ends to monitoring as presented.
I, I see a hand raised, by the way.
I saw a hand go up, um, President Weaver.
Thank you, good catch. Um, Henry Schreiber, did you want to make a public comment on this?
Uh, yes, I do. Actually, I'm so sorry, this is his mother, Caitlin. My Zoom is not working, but his is. I did want to make a comment about um the Skyline and IB program. I have two senior, uh, two sons in high school. Um, tenth grade and twelfth grade, I've been a long time uh parent. Um, I myself did AP classes in high school. And um was in the Iscal High School boundaries for a while and now I'm high, I'm Skyline boundaries. And I, I love Skyline and I love our teachers and I've actually liked a lot of this IB classes, but. I really wish that there could be an opportunity for our Skyline kids to take AP. It is, um, they're not the same, they're very, very different, and especially with the SL and the HL. There's such a level of um technicality in some of the classes. That even though people kind of say they're similar, they're really, they're really not. I, I've heard a lot of high schools across the country, and even like I know, um, some high schools in the Bellevue School District do have IB. And AP classes at the same school. Skyline only has the one. And, um, because of the grading, the grading seems to be so much more stringent or so much more strict. That's, I think that's the right word or difficult. I must be tired. It just, I, I, I just think it can be hard for our students. So, um, I love the idea or do see the need for more US government or history classes at Skyline High School. And I just want to make one more comment about the concerts. My sons are in drama and music and they have done an amazing job. Nancy Zibart, the choir director at Skyline has done an amazing job putting together these choir concerts last spring. And they were pretty, pretty incredible. So they are working really hard to make it work. And I'm really, really excited to see that maybe there's a chance for these kids to have a chance to be together. Um, our drama department just also did a radio play, um, War of the Worlds a couple of weeks ago, and that was fantastic. So these teachers are super creative and they are trying to find ways to get our kids to be together. So I'm just, um, just have been so pleased at all the hard work they're doing. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that. Appreciate the input. I'm sorry. I didn't see the little hand go up.
That's okay.
I'll get better at this.
That's okay.
Okay. So now I have a motion on the floor. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So the motion passes.
Thank you.
And, oh gosh, we're on schedule. Who knew? Um, capital projects update. Who is giving me a capital project?
Yeah. Director Mullins is probably out there in the, the virtual world somewhere. Oh, there he just popped in.
Popped up. Yep.
Give us some good news. What's going on?
Yeah. I'm going to try to, I'm going to try to do a little, uh, treat here that, uh, share a little 3D rendering video that my architect for E16 sent me. So we're going to give it a shot. See how it works. To go back to share screen.
Apparently the sun's always out in your office, Tom. I just see blue sky and that Microsoft facility behind you there.
Yes. Unfortunately, it's not going to let me share in a fashion that I understand how to do it. So we'll just go to the capital projects update. Stephen. If you want to pop up that PowerPoint. Okay. This is.
enlarge that, Tom?
Stephen?
Would be good.
Is it not the full screen or is it just a small one?
It's just a small one.
Oh, please.
My tired zoom eyes could never read that.
There are, there are letters and I'm sure they are words, but I'm all I've got.
I see a pump mixer and a couple of concrete trucks there, but.
And you can't just show your screen, Tom?
I'm going to give it a shot right now. We, Stephen and I were working earlier and it's just, my screen was being, um, difficult.
Last week when I gave this, I didn't have a problem. So I don't really know. I just had a problem with the details.
There you go, Tom.
That looks good, Tom.
There we go. Look at that.
Good in a lot of ways.
Elementary 16 keeps moving on. The steel erection is continuing. The pump truck you see there is pumping concrete up to the upper decks, which are, which form the floors. They're called slab on metal decks. They're being placed. The roofing system in the classroom wing is underway. It's insulation and they put a peel and stick, they call it, call it to, keep out the weather. Water line continues underground utilities, mechanical, electrical. And we're still working with the city of Sammamish to get the frontage improvements that need to happen for the widening of the road. Still working with them on that. And this is where we run into.
And it's still on time, right?
Yep. Still on time. Here's a picture of the, uh, of the roof, roofing going on on the classroom wing. And, uh, that's some of that slab on metal deck. We are looking, you are seeing a picture of a nice orange sunrise, aren't you?
Yes, it's gorgeous.
Make sure that the screen's moving. And that's some of that slab on metal deck being poured and trialed out. Middle school six moving along. Metal, there's a lot of metal in this building. It, the erection is still continuing. Similar, um, path as the elementary school, they're doing structural steel. The slab on metal decks are being placed. A lot of site work happening, continuing to happen. And we have a, a final permit, final site work permit with the city. We're continuing to work on. Much more of a challenging site. As you can see, it's a very wet and, uh, as we know, all know water all runs downhill and we're at the bottom of the hill. So managing water is a, is a, is a full-time job there. And the other picture there is the concrete and the slab for the slab on metal deck being pumped up. For the con, that's the commentary you're seeing that pump go to. Putting down rock for the parent drive loop. I try to pick pictures that show something dramatic happening. This is the north, southeast corner of the field and track. There's what we call an MSC wall, mechanically stabilized earth wall on the bottom there, those what look like big bags. And then above that is a formed concrete wall on the upper portion. High school four continuing to work with city staff to work through the issues and keep the project moving forward. Maple Hills, got a permit, going to go out to bid right after the first of the year. And that work will start here in, uh, early spring for that project. Beaver Lake, we just went into the city of Sammamish with, or in at the end of this week, as a matter of fact, to the city of Sammamish and that work should start this summer. Liberty High School's moving along. It had, it, it hit a slow patch, but it's moving now. And their new concessions building and restroom buildings are, are weathered in and, and project will be done in January, right around February 1st. Uh, Liberty or Issaquah High School Stadium improvements, we're into the city of, um, Issaquah for permit and we, uh, expect to start on that project in late spring. And that includes press, uh, press box renovation, some home stands, ADA improvements and additional stands and ADA for the visitor's side also.
Oh, I was going to ask, how long do you expect that construction to be?
For the Issaquah High School?
Yes.
Oh, if all went well, I think that could be a four or five month project. It's not real long. There'll probably be long lead times on some of the stuff we have to get, but they're trying to keep it as simple as possible.
Yeah. I was just wondering if it was going to have an impact on the fall. Like I guess the fall, whatever the fall sports are. I have every expectation. We are going to be back in school in September. And, um, I just wanted to know what, uh, the impact is for the fall sports.
Our intent is to have this done by fall sports, for, for fall, fall sports. Yeah, they're, we're pushing it. It's a, the city has indicated it's not a complicated, um, permitting process, but, um, we keep our fingers crossed and, uh, if we can get, if we can get a permit in the spring, we can get going. It's not a long project.
Right. Yeah. To keep the pressure on and, and help them know, we really need it done in time for, uh, the fall season.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And then the, the, uh, schedule for each one of the, um, of the projects.
It's nice to see that schedule getting, uh, smaller and smaller. You know, just a few years ago, there was a bunch of elementary re, remodel and addition projects on that schedule.
Yep.
They're not there anymore because they're done.
Yes, absolutely.
New classrooms.
Absolutely.
Tom, before you go, can you provide the board a brief update on Holly Street?
Yes, I can.
Nothing, you don't, you don't need to go into massive detail if you have any renderings, but I did want the board to go. And I saw, um, Representative Callan sneak in, uh, uh, some part of the call. So, um, I wanted to let her know that the, uh, Jody, I saw her turn a camera on too, have, we're, we're putting together some of that state, that state funding, uh,
Yeah.
continue to work on, uh, on early learning project at Holly's.
Yep. Putting an early learning center over at the old Holly, the old admin belt building, which is the Holly Street campus, we call it. And it's going to be six classrooms. It's going to be, have its own health room, um, child find program moves in there. Nathan's, uh, before and after school care program is going to be on that campus. And, um, we are trying to get into the city of Issaquah in, in January, the end of January for, uh, permitting and we're expecting to, uh, push to be open for September this fall.
And we believe that will be a tenant, tenant improvement permit, uh, as we're not changing the footprint of the building, just so.
Exactly. We're getting it all within the.
Since you are, you've been integral in the planning and the, and this, open to secure the state funding with Representative Callan and Senator Mullet.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Cooper. Just adding that, um, that's, that'll be future site also of, um, planning for a dual language preschool program. Our E cap program will be housed there, uh, some of it, some of our ECE programs, um, as well as, Nathan Weineger has offered, um, tuition-based preschools in the past and those will be offered there as well.
And to be clear, we have, uh, programs and, uh, that, and students there right now.
Yes.
And, and, and we have been, we have done some improvements. If you went over to the campus, you'd see some new fencing and stuff because we needed to encapsulate it, um, for students and whatnot. And, um, I actually misspoke when I was meeting with, uh, Representative Callan and Senator Mullet the other day. Cause I've been, I walk over there, just full disclosure, I live in that area. I walk there all the time. I watched all that construction happening. Some of it I've learned too, was also related to last, uh, February's floods. We suffered a little bit of flood, uh, damage to the parking lot there. Um, and I was watching that construction and I was assuming that that was, um, the bigger project. And, um, I said, oh no, we're, we're working. We've, we're doing all this stuff. And then I was in Tom's office and I saw a bunch of blueprints. And he pointed out to me that the bulk of that project is still to come. So it's very exciting though. It's actually one of the, right now it seems to be one of the busiest facilities in our district.
And Jody, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we got two chunks of money from the state or we just get one? I can't remember.
We just, we just got the one.
A hundred and fifty thousand or so.
We got another s- small chunk from, uh, ESD for, um, our E cap program just recently this week.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're very appreciative of those efforts. Jody and her team, and, and I know the board is well aware of this and I sent it out in a Friday update, a, a month or so ago. Our early learning plan that we had set out on several years ago is, it, it was, it's just moving forward tremendously. The only thing that has hampered us, of course, now is COVID. Jody mentioned, we were, we were prepared and ready to start a dual language preschool. And so, and that's all still going to happen. We just, we've got to get in person and we've got some more work to do in that, that area. But, um, I'm really excited about that, that facility. And it's taking pressure off of our other schools as well. So there's a real added, added value there.
And Tom, if you don't mind, while we're on early language, just, or early learning, I just wanted to add that we're also moving forward with our first transitional kindergarten.
That was going to be my works in progress update, Jody.
Sorry. I spoiled the surprise.
You, you're the one who really deserves to get to talk about that anyway. So go for it.
No, just, I don't want to steal Tom's, uh, Mr. Mullins' thunder, but just, uh, really excited to be offering the state-funded transitional kindergarten. And that, uh, we're working with, uh, IEA on, um, what that will look like when it opens, but we will start serving kids on January 11th.
Yeah. This year.
Yes.
I told Superintendent Thiele, pretty impressive to build program during a pandemic. So, uh, but when Jody puts something to plan, it seems to get implemented. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to question.
Stand back.
Okay. Thank you, Tom, for that update. Schools are looking good.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. We'll figure out how to get that, uh, 3D flyover video.
Yeah.
In the future for the board.
I'll get Stephen working on that one.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Um, okay. Legislative matters. Uh, we don't seem to have a ledge rep. Does anybody else know anything legislatively?
Well, I, Superintendent Thiele had it in his, um, works in progress when the three of us, who joined us? And I think Lena joined us to meet with, uh, Senator Mullet and Representatives, uh, Callan and Ramos. Um, so I don't know. Superintendent Thiele, I won't steal your thunder if you've written down, because I didn't write down what we talked about. I can just go off the top of my head.
Yeah. Well, first of all, um, really appreciate their, um, meeting with us. They spent quite a bit of time with us and, um, appreciate, I, I believe, I don't, I think it was, um, probably, um, Director Gallagher that coordinated it for us and we were able to meet. We talked a lot about the upcoming session and potential budgetary impacts on K 12. I think I shared earlier during our E two discussion, every chance I get, I'm reminding, um, our, our legislators that the, uh, that there's going to be a lag of impact from COVID. Once we get on the other side of this, it's still going to take us a few years of work to address the learning loss as a result of the impact right now. So, um, we just got to help them keep. And I know they've got a very, very tough job ahead of them with, um, you know, hopefully we'll continue to see a, uh, improvement in our revenue forecasts, our state revenue forecast. But it's a long session this year. Um, they've also been instructed, I know, to, uh, really be, judicious in the number of bills that each member brings. I know that they're, they're trying to get members to, uh, cap their bills at about seven. And I think historically it's been closer to 12 would be the, the normal average. So they want to, um, focus their work on COVID relief, which makes a lot of sense, I'm sure. But I, I, you know, that was kind of the heart of our conversation that I recall. We, we did, um, you'll note too, that, um, Director Callan had, um, has been an important force legislatively for us in our work with, um, the school that we operate at, the Echo Glen, Children's Center, um, the juvenile detention facility. And, um, there, a task force was formed, recommendations have come out of that task force. We have another meeting, I believe, coming up this Friday to discuss that. And there's ongoing work that needs to happen there as well. And so we appreciate, um, the efforts on that side. So that we can work and serve those student, that student population, um, better as well. It's a complicated, um, echo is, it's very complicated, um, institutional education. But, um, we have some staff and a principal in LaShay Lee up there that is very, very passionate about it. And we're trying to work with OSPI, DCYF and, and really anybody who will work with us to make improvements to that program. So, um, that's kind of what I think I remember as talking about, um, Director Maraldo. Again, it was, you know, is appreciated. That was the fifth, those were our fifth district, representatives and legislators, and I'm sure there's probably an effort to, uh, get us, um, to do some, uh, conversations with our other, uh, representatives of what, as well, 41st and the others. We have a lot of representatives that touch parts of our district, including two, uh, United States. United States members of the House that are both have students in our district as well. So we're well represented with elected officials here in the Issaquah School District, I will say that.
And and I always like to that, to that point, so I am, the Washington State School Directors Association has its legislative R N F R N so that you all voted me to maintain. Part of that is I am a coordinating member for the Ninth Congressional District. So I'm going to be looking at ways and hopefully get a little bit more information about how like, how we can better have those discussions with our congressional members and do better advocacy. You know, I think it was this past year that Congressman Congressman Smith, his his team put together a meeting for superintendents in the Ninth. And do you know which superintendent he forgot? Superintendent Thiele, I'm like.
I invited myself.
Yeah, you live in the district, can you remember our superintendent? So that tells me that we have a lot of work to do so that if, since since Harley is going to take on the tough work of being the ledge rep, maybe I can do a little bit more now that I'm the coordinating member for F R N to be able to do some work and we can get some, kind of solidify those relationships.
Okay, great, thank you. Works in progress, Superintendent Thiele.
Okay, I do have a number of things that I wanted to talk about, but I did want to talk about one thing. And I unfortunately, I probably should have just ran out with this right at the beginning of the meeting when we had ninety or so people here. But I know the board and I have received a couple of emails and and some questions related to our recent M O U and the fact that we tie the metric that we are monitoring is the positive test rate and the King, on the King County average. And that 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 data has not been updated since November twenty first. I am told, and I will be reconfirming this when I meet with Department of Health staff on Friday, that they will, they will be continuing with that metric that they basically suspended it in in the time going into the Thanksgiving weekend because there were so many people getting COVID tests. Many, just because they wanted to go see a relative or something like that, that the system got overwhelmed with tests. And so you might, if you monitor it closely like I do, you'll know that even though it was frozen on November twenty first, for the longest time, it had a positive test rate of eight point six. And then magically, they didn't change the November twenty first lock, but the rate went all the way down to six point nine. Well, that's because they brought in a big batch of negative tests. And I think even one of our parents commented, you know, that that this number is very dependent on, you know, the numerator and the denominator. And so I I do want to reassure folks that at least that I, to my understanding, we will be receiving that number again. And the positive test rate number and King County Public Health will will be updating it, and of course, we'll be pushing on them to update it, and the Department of Health in the state of Washington, because they put it in the decision tree. They obviously value it as an important data point, they need to continue to maintain it, especially now when one of the largest districts in the state has entered into an M O U using that data as part of our reentry plan. So we're going to need that that data, and I'm confident that we will get it. There, if you go to the dashboard today, you will see that the county has pushed out some other information. You can look at the U Dub metric, which is at about nine percent on theirs. And you can look at some more localized data, they just don't have the county average up yet. So I think that's important, I want folks to know, we are on that and it is our intent to make sure that we will have that so that our community can monitor that data, as I said in our meeting last Friday. Something we could all do together, we can watch our number and we can do the behaviors we need to do to help drive that number down so we can get our K three population back in school. I also just wanted to share briefly, because I know the board has had a keen interest in this over the years. At our meeting this past Tuesday, we our all administrator meeting, we had a equity training, professional development that our our equity department brought in Elena Sivadasan around racial trauma. In fact, it was titled racial trauma one oh one. And it's really learning, and this, this was also presented to our counselors and some of our support staff actually before it was presented to our admin team, and there'll be a follow up to this conversation during our February meeting as well. And essentially talking about the impact that the, you know, we, we know a lot about ACEs, adverse childhood conditions and how that creates trauma and trauma in students can impact their ability to learn. And and that there's an aspect of of trauma caused by racism. And so that's what we were learning about, and I I personally really enjoyed the presentation and our survey results from staff found it very, they liked it as well. I did want to note that this is Computer Science Week, I, when I see that, I I always think of Director Moore. She's been such a proponent of that, and we do have hour of code activities happening across the district in a number of our schools. And so we continue, makes sense in our community and our school system that this is something that we would participate and want to celebrate in. You know, I, I'm not exactly sure how it will hour of code looks in the virtual world, but I would assume this is one of those things that can probably do fairly well in a virtual setting. So that is, there are some hour of code activities happening this week. Jody already spoke to the transitional K planning, wow, that is a big deal. I'm very excited for us, for those of you who in the public, maybe who aren't aware of this, this is a new thing in the state of Washington, it is state funded for districts who will do it and we're doing it, and we will have our first group of students who turn five years old after the August thirty first date who will benefit, maybe haven't had the advantages of preschool and will benefit from some additional transitional kindergarten. So I, we have a class, I believe, of about ten students that will be starting in January, transitional K students. Do you have a question, Director Moore?
Yeah, I was gonna say, and well, since those are more like, we get to call them our preschool kids, do they get to start in person?
I believe that is the plan, is that not true?
I believe on Monday, we have some continuing conversations with our teachers' union. That that is our hope, so stay tuned.
Yeah, that that's absolutely our, what we're trying for.
Just to clarify, isn't that, don't they need to be in person in order for us to be receiving those fundings for transitional K?
We, there are definitely guidelines that we have to follow, Director Maraldo. For example, it has to take place on a school site, on a school campus so that there's access to the same opportunities for P E, music, library, lunch. But since we're remote K five right now, it's a little bit different in this remote learning.
So we're not required necessarily, is that what you're hearing, Jody?
And also, we, part of the requirements under the guidelines is you have to start the program prior to the last day of January. So that that would give us a little bit of wiggle room if we couldn't start in person right away. So that that hours per year are a little bit different as well.
But this is a class that would already be set up for COVID mitigation because I believe it's about ten students that have been identified for this first class, which fits well within the six foot physical distancing guidelines. Of course, anybody we bring into our buildings, we do attestations and mask wearing and temperature checking and all of that. So much like we're doing with our preschoolers right now in our E cap.
That's correct.
Jody, is this a full day program or a part day program?
It's a intended to be a full day program. Right now, given the situation, it will be a half day program, will follow the same person as the in-person schedule for K one.
Okay, good, thank you.
Three and a half hour day, is that right, Jody? So it's exciting, and again, I know I said it earlier, but Jody and Nancy and and her team, Paige, in our, in our special programs in early learning of elementary, they've just done a tremendous job. And if you go back, you know, to Jody's original plan from a few years ago with the, you know, really, it goes all the way back to full day K and the board taking action to help us push full day K into the school system ahead of schedule. The preschool program that we were able to get started, the.
Pre K summer school?
Pre K summer school, yeah. You, you could go on and on about it, I'm sure, Jody, it's, it's pretty remarkable. And, you know, really shows that we, we came out several years ago with a strong emphasis for early learning. I know Director Gallager is a huge proponent of early learning, participated in the early learning program at the University of Washington. We, Jody and I attended a program with him there, gosh, that was several years ago now. And the training that you all went back to in Colorado, or is that right? Okay, Colorado, you know, I just, it's really, it's really been a some, a point of pride, I think, for our district. We've made great strides in that area of early learning. We've still got work to do, but it's great to be able to make that progress. And as Mr. Cooper said, to be able to even do this during a pandemic, to continue to implement and add new program. We had a plan and we stuck to it, so. I did want to touch, we, Tom Mullen showed us how our, our two new schools are coming up beautifully. But there's other work that's happening, our, we've named our planning principals, as you're well aware, Principal McKee and Principal Coyle. And now they have started to form their core teams as well, so that process has begun with the core team formation. So, you know, before you know it, they're going to be coming before the board, wanting you to name these schools and pick mascots and color. So, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll see how, that's always a fun activity, yeah. The boundary review committee for these schools has started as well. Doctor Almi and CFO Cooper had their first meeting, they have another one on Thursday coming up. And, or no, maybe it's next, this Thursday, is it this Thursday, next Thursday? They have another meeting coming up. I I apologize, I don't mean to confuse people, we'll have the proper dates and times and everything on the website. I know we have been receiving some feedback from, from the meeting, which is great, that's what we wanted. And they're just moving forward, and I think they've got four more meetings scheduled. And, you know, it'd be nice if we can wrap it up in that time, but we'll do what we need to do to to get that process wrapped up. So we'll have boundaries around our schools and around our new schools and be able to put children in there. I did just brief reference, just remind folks that our student experience or engagement survey has launched, this is the survey we're doing with the Center for Educational Excellence, so encourage people to participate in that. There was a reference earlier about our athletic pods, Executive Director Hood, our, our athletic directors, our coaches, our building administrators have just done a great job getting those started. Over five hundred high school students are participating in in these activities now, and there's more being added in the coming weeks. So I, I'm just really pleased, it was great for me to hear tonight. Didn't surprise me at all that that was very, very positive for those students. And so I'm glad that that's able to happen. I see a question there, Director Moore.
So you mentioned high school students, and then you said more, does that mean we're going to get some of these at the middle school level as well?
That is, those conversations are happening. What I meant by more is that there's actually more coming at the, the three comprehensive high schools as well. I'm just reading right now from an update that I got from Executive Moore, like, for example, it Liberty High School has a hundred athletes across four sports with one more coming on soon. So I'm assuming that's one more sport is adding, and we'll be doing some pods. And Skyline has three more sports coming, two this week and one the following week. And right now, Issaquah High has three more coming as well. So it's really, the, the A Ds have been working with the coaches and coordinating. And, you know, we also hope to be able to start having some of our clubs and activities, do some outdoor activities as well. And I would note that part of the scheduling challenge we're having right now, the, the gentleman that was on earlier saying, hey, great, we got some space, can we get some more? We have to find out internally if some of our internal clubs and and we have to get all these athletic pods in first, we have to know how many we have. And then if we're going to have impact on the usage of those facilities from our own internal clubs. Once we know all of that, then we'll know what else will open up on the schedule for outside rentals as well. So that is something that we are are keeping an eye on, but excited about that. And and I know that I've had questions from people, you know, why, why are you doing athletic pods now, Superintendent Thiele? You need to be getting these kids in for academics, and I don't disagree with that. However, I think these pods are important from a socially emotional standpoint for our students. We heard it from the parents tonight, it's the highlight, you know, two half hour sessions have now become the highlight for some of our students. But it is different in that all of these things require conversations with labor groups. And in this particular case, are we don't have unionized, organized coaches and stuff, so it's just a little easier for us to navigate in those waters. It's, we're going to continue to have conversations with our activities coordinators as well, because some of those do live under the collective bargaining agreement. And I want to be clear, I'm not saying we can't do it, we'll, we'll be able to do it, we were just able to move quicker. Plus, it's an outside activity, which is much more COVID mitigation friendly. And so once we start getting inside the buildings, then it's going to require a different level of of mitigation as well on on the COVID side. But we're working on all of it, I just want people to know, we, we want to find ways to engage our students. Both, you know, we will continue to refine our virtual teaching and our experience, but we also want to find in-person ways to be able to support students, we know how important that is.
So we're.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So are there going to be opportunities for middle school students?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we are looking into those as well, Director Moore, we just, we prioritize high school first. But I know Executive Director Morris has, he's been talking this past week about the performing arts and all of those activities, but that, that's just part of the conversation coming up too. So I, yes, the short answer would be yes, I would anticipate it, I just don't have a timeline for you right now. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, and I'm sure the board saw this and is well aware of it, but the governor in his press conference, when he extended some of his, the closure of indoor dining and things like that has also expanded, extended the O P M A COVID rules for board meetings. And I believe, was it through January nineteenth? I I want to say, so clearly, our, our next meeting, our first meeting in in January will still be under these COVID rules, and it's typically something they've kind of done month by month. So just, I, I know the board wrote a letter, we, we have requested some, some laxing of this so that we could do, provide some more in-person meeting. I know people have have frankly been critical of us, how dare you talk about in-person learning when you're meeting remotely? Well, we, we meet remotely because that's what we have to do, that's, that's what the rules say right now, so. Is there a question there from Director Mullins?
I just want to go back to the very first comment you were making about the data update on the King County site.
Yes.
Because that, I think that point has some energy behind it, so I just want to clarify.
Okay.
Your, your, your comment and what people will see, because I think if people go back to the dashboard as it has been implemented, they will still see an old date there, an old data, that the way King County has actually added the new data is actually above the dashboard.
Yes.
It's a separate entry, so I think people are still saying, when I look where I've always looked, that number hasn't been updated. But there's actually notes and addendums above that dashboard is where you will find the updated data of partial results through yesterday. And so I just want to be clear for people, because I think it's like, I still don't see it, but it's because it's not in the dashboard proper. So that's just one point of logistics, like I see people getting the wrong impression by that. And then the second, I will just kind of back to the pods and the other opportunities, and maybe I'm bleeding a bit into the schedule planning. But I do think a conversation I'd love to have more formally is what are all of the opportunities we're opening up for different students to have some love? for different students to have some level of connection across the different kinds of pods, whether it's, you know, arts or activities or sports? So that we can basically get to what the coverage is, like what is the percentage or or the amount of our population that has some access to to a connection point. So I think if we could have that conversation, you know, and kind of, you know, I'm, I'm always back to the math, but as a math perspective, are we able to open up some level of connection to 25% of our students, 50% is it bigger? Like, I'd love to be able to step through that in more more specificity, like seeing them all together would be great.
Yeah, no, I think that that's something that we'll, we'll absolutely be able to do, Director Mullins. And and I kind of know off the top of my head a lot of these numbers, but I would want to bring you more precise data.
Yeah, I mean, I think we all have to be clear. We're, we, we worked on K 12. There's just different science and different numbers around our older students as a, as a parent, personally with a fifth grader and a high schooler. You know, we're in a different category. So I think it's important that it's important to be clear on where we can open up some opportunity for connection is a, is an important thing to do, but but there's a lot of, I think, energy, well, it should just be everybody. Well, but it's a whole different science conversation with the older categories. And so I just think it's really important to get clear on what opportunities are available for connection and what percentage of our our students can we give those opportunities would be, would be great.
And and with that, we'll also, to the extent that we would like that probably sooner rather than later, like maybe even in our next meeting, even if it's not all implemented, because with could be the plan that says, this is what we have today. But this is how much more we have to go. And then our hope is we catch another 10% or 15 or 20% of kids to make sure kids have like one of those avenues, whether it's athletics or a club or if any of the performing arts can do something in person or whatever the pod is. But I I like being able to to really see because we really want to make sure every kid is somehow gotten, given some chance to do something at some point, even just once a week.
That's right.
That would dovetail nicely with the whole student engagement conversation.
Yes.
Have when you get your survey results back.
Yeah, because I can attest to being able to have one kid back in an athletic pod. It it makes a big difference.
That's great. I I'm that, I'm really glad to hear that. Yeah. And so we'll absolutely, as we add these, and I want to be clear too, and I know we talked a lot about this last Friday, so I won't go into detail there, but we, this is the focus of our bargain now. Our our focus had been K three. Now we'll start talking about four through 12th grade students and creating opportunities for them. Academic opportunities as well, academic support opportunities. And again, the reason we talk about pods, I I want to be clear, it's all around the COVID mitigation science. It's no more than six people. So that's five students, one adult educator or coach or whoever. It's still physically distanced and masked up. And of course, when we talk about coming inside a building, we even have a, we have to even be more careful at that point. But you're absolutely right, Director Mullins. I mean, we there's a reason why even across the country you see very much lower numbers of secondary and high school schools doing any kind of hybrid or in-person. And it and it really is driven that, it's not to say it's not happening.
That's right.
Certainly is happening. But not to the level of the youngest learners. The youngest learners are the ones like, for example, in the city of New York and all of that, those are the ones coming back first. And it's, it's, it's not that we don't care about those older kids. It's that the science tells us we can do it with these younger ones in a safer way. So then we're left with, at the secondary, at least at this time, having to find ways where we can meet those COVID mitigation requirements. And we have to, and we have to have staff who are willing to do it and we have, and they are, and we just got to work out the details of it. And so that's, that's kind of the next phase of where our collective bargaining is going with our, with the IEA. And I'm, I'm confident that we're going to be able to get there. And that hopefully, we're going to have fairly large numbers of kids participating, as you were all just describing, in one form or another of something, keeping engaged and connected to our school system so that we we can ultimately get to the place where we are back to our normal life and our stadiums will be ready for fall events.
Yeah, I just think it's really important to say, this is a, it's a different set of calculus. It's a different set of requirements and we have to be super clear about that and what can we do on a, on a different set of of mitigation, a different set of science, a different set of concerns. And so for me, that's just super important. But getting that list of what are the opportunities? And being super clear about that, I think, would be really important when we, when we come back in January.
Great.
So I had two things. So one is related and I probably should have mentioned it during legislative update because I completely forgot. So on Friday, the small group of us that meet, the, the school board members that meet together will be meeting Friday morning. And the second half of that, starting at nine, they will be meeting with Public Health. I'll be doing my 22 hours with NSBA this week. But they're meeting to talk specifically about what's in the decision tree, what kind of information. So in those discussions, if you have stuff that you would like us to talk to King County about specifically, send me an email so I can call us those, call, yeah, call, call us those into certain ideas to be able to feed as well. Wasd's executive director, Tim Garchaw, will be meeting with the governor's office on Friday. Talking also about more specifically the decision tree. How does that relate? Because as we discussed, I think at the last special board meeting, WEA had a meeting with the governor and then it was really brought to his attention that he was not talking to school directors or superintendent. So he was getting one side of a story. So there is that meeting to really kind of discuss. If we could make changes or clarity to the decision tree, what would those be? So I have a board meeting tomorrow evening. So Harlan and I will be at that. So if you could email us any responses, if you can take a look at that decision tree, and I'd say any staff that's listening as well, what clarity would you need for this to really be more effective in your communications with staff and negotiations? Or in the ultimate, ultimately for us, making those key decisions? That would be really helpful, hearing from your insights on that, I think, would be really, really important. And I had something else. Oh, I know what I was thinking. You know, one of the things is really getting at what Sydney, you were talking about. What do we do to get those kids, fourth grade and beyond, so that they are having some type of connection? And it really makes me wonder if one of the solutions, if we know that from now till the end of the year, it is likely that we will not be able to bring our middle school and high school students back for in-person learning. Is there something we can do with Wednesdays? Can we do social emotional learning? They come in in smaller groups? You know, and say, this week, we're going to be allowing kids A through, you know, F to come in and we'll sort them in smaller pods to be able to meet or however you want to do it. Okay, we're bringing in half of our sixth graders, half of our seventh graders. So it doesn't have to be all of them, but they'll get an opportunity throughout a month or a month and a half of actually coming back into the building or coming to the building that they've not been to as a student. Seeing some teachers, seeing one another, because I know that that, just being able to be in the same room with other people is, we're human beings and we expect, we need that contact. And so, you know, I get it with the grocery store person as they're checking me out, but I still have those opportunities. And I'm really concerned that kids are not getting the opportunity to spend time with other kids.
Yeah, I I have to tell you, Wednesday, Wednesday's on the target of the conversation we have when we come back, like what, what can be done with Wednesdays, right? We're, we're talking that as social emotional learning and so which obviously they're going through a curriculum, but what can we actually leverage that time to provide some social emotional support, maybe is the word in real, in real life? We can call it I R L, but you know, in real life with the, with the, particularly for middle and high because of the way the Wednesday schedule is, is, is made. And so yes, I really want to talk about Wednesdays. Wednesdays are my target day.
That was all that I had, Director Weaver. That, I think that was one of the first times I ever recall a works in progress turning into a question and answer session too. So, you know, the pandemic just changes everything. Happy to do it.
We're nothing if not flexible here. Okay, announcements and correspondence. I think we have lots and lots of emails attached to the agenda. Marnie, you and I received one that I forwarded to Diane from a student.
I was gonna say, right now, the link's not working and so I did not, and I'm sorry, I didn't tell staff that again. I'm just going to say 22 hours with NSBA this week. I've not had any time. I've already had my six hour meeting today.
So, but I'm sure somebody can fix that. It was there at one point, I thought. But anyway, and then, yeah, I sent, I sent another one that only came to a couple of us to Diane.
If you refresh your screen, you'll, you should be able to see it again. I updated one little thing on it, the, the date up in the corner.
I can see it now.
There you go. I can see it now.
Wow, it's long. Okay. Anything anybody needs to add? Oh, good. Okay, calendar and future agenda topics. Somewhere, somebody needs to schedule the last
Yeah, you want a motion?
I would love a motion.
I move the board hold a school improvement meeting on April 1st, 2021 from 1:00 to 4:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, Sydney, you look confused. No?
Looking at a calendar.
Yeah, not confused. I have to use two calendars. So I'm looking to see what's on April 1st.
Date with you, 1:00 to 4:00?
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Oh, good. Okay, we have a motion, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed? Great. Anything else for calendar and future agenda topics?
I will plan on the Liberty High School schedule as we discussed in in depth. So just know I made a note of that. President Weaver, and I know we'll be getting together to do agenda planning. And I also heard the comment about trying to get some data around just how many op, in-person opportunities we're providing for our students. What are they and what are the numbers?
Okay, anything else for the good of the order? We're going to actually adjourn a meeting at 9:23?
You're ahead of schedule.
I should have voted you for you for president a long time ago.
What happened is there are only four of us.
Ahead of schedule. If you hurry and get your gavel out.
Okay, so I call this meeting to a close. Everybody have a wonderful holiday and we'll see you all in January.
Happy New Year when we get there.
Yeah, 21, yeah.
See you next year.